Oh, Andrew's, oh.
I know, that's why.
You're in the chair.
Well, you're standing up, so I'm standing up.
Uh huh. Our weight in the right? Five thirty. All right, close enough. Having the appointment time at five thirty, I would like to call the Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, committee of the whole meeting to order. Please rise and follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Clerk, please take the rule.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgensey.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I would accept the motion for approval of the October thirteenth, twenty twenty committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The chair is aware of no presentations, so next we have table, ordinances tabled remain committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
Will do. Two thousand seventeen, one oh three. Two thousand eighteen, one ten. Two thousand nineteen, zero zero eight. Two thousand nineteen, four thirty. Twenty twenty, zero six seven. Twenty twenty, one five three. Twenty twenty, two oh seven. Twenty twenty, two seventy-three. Twenty twenty, two eighty-nine. Twenty twenty, three fourteen. Twenty twenty, three fifteen. Twenty twenty, three thirty. Twenty twenty, three thirty-one. Twenty twenty, three thirty-two. Twenty twenty, three thirty-three. Twenty twenty, three forty-six. Twenty twenty, three seventy-eight. Three twenty, three seventy-nine. Three twenty, three eighty. Twenty twenty, three ninety-eight. Twenty twenty, four oh four. Twenty twenty, four oh six.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is anybody wishing to pull any of those ordinance for discussion? Seeing none, moving on. Mr. Clerk, let's have, oh, I'll accept, if there's no objection, that we do ordinance twenty twenty dash four four seven first.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Clerk, ordinance two, twenty twenty dash four four seven, please.
Twenty twenty, four four seven. An ordinance authorizing execution of a subsequent agreement number eighteen dash SR dash zero zero eleven with the authorizing payment to the Salvation Army for operating an emergency shelter day center and coordinated services for the unsheltered homeless from November first, twenty twenty through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, utilizing Community Development Grant Block, Grant Cares Act funds in an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for good discussion?
Second.
A motion, a second for discussion? Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Yeah, I've got, I've, thank you. I'm going to take my mask off tonight. It's a little tighter. I have quite a few questions about this ordinance. First thing I want to say is that my concern, the, the, the first thing I'd like to say is that I greatly appreciate the Salvation Army for stepping up at this late date, again this year, and agreeing in a time when we're dealing with not just temperatures, but COVID, stepping up and agreeing to take on a fairly substantial task for the city. We appreciate that very much, and I understand we're going to be hearing from Salvation Army tonight. Taking a step back from that, though, I do have some questions on the origination and the process of how this came to us, and I don't know if Director Yezel or the mayor can answer these questions, but my first question would be, do we have this money?
Director Yezel.
And then by, and when I ask, do we have this money? I will point out that there are different dollar amounts that are associated with the documentation on this grant. One of them says two seventy-five. I've seen a two hundred and fifty, or two hundred and fifty thousand, and I've seen three hundred thousand. So I'd like to be very clear on which amount is appropriate. But first of all, Director Yezel, do we have these funds in hand yet?
The particular funds that I'm assuming, because this might not-
Could you take off your mask?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Can't understand you.
Yes, sure.
Can't understand you. Thank you.
Mumbled. The, these particular funds, first of all, this did not originate in my office, because I'm not a hundred percent sure. Mayor, is this the future Cares Act funds that we will receive? Is that?
Yeah, actually, there's, depends on which direction everybody would like to go. My preference would be through the Cares Act funds. This is a perfect expenditure for those funds. As everybody knows, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we do have, we were awarded over seven hundred thousand dollars. We're going to have a public hearing next week with regards to that, so we could do the full amount with Cares Act, but if that's not the preference of the coun, or the council, then we can use regular CDBG funds. Or the other option, of course, is through the corporate fund. Bottom line is, everybody knows, everybody says they support the street homeless. We're going to have to do something, so we can pick and choose which bucket we want to take it from, but we definitely need to pick a bucket.
Alderwoman Conley.
So we're, we're picking a quarter of a million bucket right here. Is that correct, Mayor? Okay.
Correct.
So we do not have these funds yet, is that correct?
Not if it's Cares Act funds. No, we do not.
And we would have to have an additional hearing in order to spend these-
Right. If you will recall, the process we went through, the first time we got our first round of, of Cares Act funds, we had to do an amendment to our, our current consolidated plan, and then once we did that, you know, we had to go through a hearing process. We had to have a five-day comment period. We had to then have that approved through this body, and then we had to send it to HUD for their approval. They approved it, and then once all of that happened, then we would be able to spend, expend those funds.
Okay, and so, in my understanding, with this type of a federal grant, we're talking about a reimbursement program.
Correct, yes.
So is this something where the city pulls from its funds, and then we get reimbursed? Or is, are we obligated to reimburse just Salvation Army?
We, we reimburse Salvation Army. So once it's gone through the whole planning process, and, and HUD has approved it, then we have those monies available for drawdown.
Okay, and I would ask, Chair, if we have someone from Salvation Army, I certainly would like to know. We're looking, I mean, it's, it's October twenty-seventh. November first, which is when this contract is scheduled to start, is literally around the corner. I, I, I would just like to make sure that Salvation Army has funds on hand to open on, what is it, Sunday? Do we have someone from Salvation Army in the audience?
If you do back there, yes, if you approach.
Thank you.
Can you state your name and address for the record for the clerk?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Jeff Eddy, Captain, and my home address is two, oh, you want home? Business, what do you want?
Business is fine.
Business, sixteen hundred East Clear Lake Avenue, Springfield.
Thank you, sir.
That's a very complicated question. Alderwoman Conley.
I would, and again, Captain Eddy, we spoke, and, and I appreciate you doing that. I just want to, again, reiterate, I do not have concerns with the services that we're, we're moving forward with you, and I had a really good conversation last week, and I, I very much appreciate the Salvation Army stepping up in this manner. So I want to make sure that we, you understand that.
Sure.
But I also want to make sure that the city is not putting you in an awkward position with a commitment of twenty-four-hour services when we don't know-
And we have a fantastic director in place. It's the twenty-four-hour service isn't the issue. The issue on hand right now is the money, because I'm stuck between this and my headquarters that, I mean, their job is to make sure I'm not burning the place down, and this has the potential to burn the place down. If for some reason you guys decide you don't want to fund this, and we start, and the people are hired, and we pay them, we're in trouble. So, because no, we don't have an extra quarter of a million dollars, absolutely not. So I don't know how to fix that, and I know that we have to be up and running by Sunday, so.
And how are you equipped for just the bare basics for this shelter? I mean, I'm talking-
Sure.
Bedding, you know, basic supplies, so that people have somewhere that's not just out of the cold, but that's, that's safe and decent for them.
Well, and the way this is working out, what we'll have this year is like way above what we've had in the past. We have the opportunity to use the old rehab center building, which was set up for this purpose, and the rehab center was gracious enough to leave beds in their forest. So we've got the beds, we've got the, the tables, we've got the chairs, we've got everything we need, and, and the, the facility will be fantastic for this, because it gives us two floors. We can separate people, not only separate from each other, but separate in rooms. We have rooms of six people each, so when and if we get the COVID virus in one of these rooms, we can isolate that room somewhere else and, and hopefully not spread it to the rest of the community. And then downstairs is adequate day spa, day programming space, where there's a kitchen, there's a dining room, there's a, a day room, and that's where I've been working with Josh and the COC, and they're on board to help, where this isn't going to be just sheltering people. This isn't going to be just a warehousing of, of people. The, the, the whole intention of this is to do something bigger. And I think you asked me the other day on the phone what you, you, well, you're, you're, you were worried about how much money was being spent, and it wasn't on program. But I think the beauty of having the Salvation Army as part of this is it builds in program. I mean, we, we housed people last year. We're going to house people this year. We've got the COC on our side. We're going to house people. We're going to get, I think it's unrealistic to think that we'll have this fixed by March thirty-first, but I, I do know that we'll be in a better place at the end than we are now. And with the COC's help, and there, I know I've got Fifth Street Renaissance coming in, Washington Street Mission, they're going to be coming in to offer services. There, it's a volunteer thing. I think that's something else you talked about. It could defer costs, but I see it more as an added service. Instead of them just watching people, they're going to be there to do a specific job.
So, and that was something that you and I talked about, because obviously, we're now talking about a quarter of a million dollars for a five-month contract, and come the end of March, I mean, and again, this is not directed to you. Mayor, maybe you can answer. I mean, this is not a plan for getting people out of homelessness. This is a fairly expensive Band-Aid to get through, I mean, a very difficult time. And, and I'm, I very much appreciate that we have COVID funds right now, but my concern is, April one, we still have COVID as, as a reality that we're living with. We've gone through a quarter of a million dollars, and we have people who have been sheltered over the winter. And the goal is to move them into a housing. And so, you know, you and I, we did talk about services, certainly when I, in my other hat, when I look at grant funds, and when I look at how funds are allocated, I look for things like, like milestones, deliverables. What are we to expect at the end of this five months?
Well, I think it's important to go back to what the mayors ask us to do. We're contracted to keep people safe, warm, and alive. That's our very first mission of this, and that's what we're going to do our best to possibly do. Now, the second thing, as the Salvation Army, we're not going to stop at that. So there will be deliverables. I, I'd like to say that we'll have half of them housed by the end. I don't know, but the, the truth is, there, there will be something, but, but our job, what he tasked us with, was to keep people safe, warm, and alive.
And that's an important task with, so you did mention that you've worked, you're, you're talking with Washington Street Mission. I mean, they're-
They're in, yeah.
Right, and because they have traditionally run that, that day service-
Right.
-operation. So are they going to be bringing, I mean, what, what are they bring, what, what sort of services are they bringing to the table?
They're actually pledging their employees. They're not going to open back up Washington Street Mission until this is over. So they're partnering with us in this to do basically what they would do at Washington Street Mission at the Salvation Army for the winter.
So skilled people who have experience in dealing with this, this population.
Exactly.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. Mayor, I have to ask, we paid twenty-five thousand dollars for a contract for a consultant. It's the end of October, and we're doing, I mean, we, we were told, I've seen it in the news, we've seen it here, the two things this consultant told you, we don't need any more shelter, and the city shouldn't be paying for these services. And here we are, at the end of October, paying for shelter services. So what passed this, this option, what is our long-term plan when we get to April? For the city to be, I mean, what is the city's role? What is the city planning on doing? And how are we going to address an extraordinary vulnerable population in our community?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you very much. I appreciate the question, because I think Captain Eddy hit the nail on the head. John Fallon hit the nail on the head when he came in. Julie Benson Becker hits a nail on the head. It's about the gap in the city right now. It's a gap of people on the streets. You know, people are, you know, what I appreciate is that, you know, Julie Becker Benson, she started by giving people a tent, simple tent. Did I like it at first? No. Is it the situation the city of Springfield or any city would like to be in? No, nobody wants me in that situation. What it did is raise the awareness, because when people are in our doorsteps of our businesses, Alderman Proctor knew about it, the city knew about it, because they were calling my office, but, you know, people don't see the magnitude of the homeless. It's invisible, but when they see it in their face, then they recognize it. And so we're at that point, but if you want to change homelessness, I don't care if it's Springfield, Illinois, or any city within our country, it's my opinion, because I've, I used to do CRA for the banking industry, community reinvestment, for those of you who might not know, that's when banks used to be discriminating against low-income areas of our community, or any community, drawing red lines around it, and they brought in people to develop programs. They put people that the community trusted to carry out those programs. That's what the banks selected me to do. So I have broad knowledge of this. It's about one-on-one relationships. How can you change lives? That's what Captain Eddy's referring to, twenty-four-seven service. So when you have these individuals for five months at the disposal of the Salvation Army, plus the continuum of care, it's bringing those resources together, but part of the continuum of care is, of course, the medical providers, and how can we assess their needs? And their needs weren't being assessed. It wasn't until John Fallon came in, and I talked to him about the homeless outreach effort. We have a homeless outreach officer, an officer of one, but that was it. It was, when we introduced that concept, I think it was two or three years ago, it, that I was hesitant, and Chief could tell you this, I was hesitant about doing it, because I didn't want that falling in the laps of our officer, but it did. And so he was the one seen to go out and mitigate people on the streets. And so that's the gap of service. So it's a matter of how do we coordinate that? We have to build that one-on-one relationship, that intensive outreach effort every single day. Not one day a year count, anything of that nature. It's every single day. I look at the homeless like I did in banking, or like when I was at the treasurer's office, people that paid parking tickets, those are our customers. The street homeless are our customers. We should be taking care of them as much as possible. Salvation Army is going to provide that menu for the next five months, twenty-four-seven. We will have that continuous assessment on a daily basis for people that are there. So I guarantee you one thing, on the deliverables, he's right. They'll be in a better position than they are today. Protect them, keep them safe, keep them alive. Most importantly, they'll be in a better position, knowing what their needs are, so we can provide that supportive housing services that they need, because we could house people, and that's where the disagreement, I disagree with John Fallon. I told him with, one of the initiatives on there was an emergency shelter, because I always felt, I think you'll always need to have that, because we do not know what tomorrow brings. Nobody knew that a pandemic was coming. Nobody knows about the rental assistance. Are people going to be, you know, evicted from their housing? Will that start escalating the homeless on the street? Nobody knows. But what we always will need is that interim service that nobody here is providing right now. There's a gap of females on the streets. There's a gap for individuals that might have substance abuse or just mental issues. So that was a true gap that's been identified, but as we move forward, that's the key concept. How do we identify through those, that shelter service, emergencies, shelter service? How do we assess the needs? And that's what we were doing. That's what Chief Winslow did, helped coordinate that effort at Tent City. For the first time, we actually tried to figure out, what are the names of the individuals in there? Who are they? Where did they come from? Are they from here? What's their story? How do we get in contact with them on a regular basis? But most importantly, what are their needs that we can tend to, so we can move them up that stair-step ladder approach to supportive services and successful housing? That's what we're trying to do, and that's what Salvation Army is a key component for taking that initial step, which this funding will help do.
All right.
And I understand that, Mayor, but we had last year, the Center for Health and Housing, which, I mean, I, I don't mean to disagree with you, but we clearly had a proposal that had very detailed analysis of the needs and the requirements of the, the community that was living, that was experiencing homelessness in our city. So this isn't news, but now we're talking about a quarter of a million dollars for five months. So we have to have something more long-term, so that people don't, April one, find out that they still don't have options, that they still don't have a solution and a plan. This is, I'm tired of putting Band-Aids on what is a gaping wound in our community. We're talking about a population that's extraordinarily vulnerable, and this is not October twenty-seventh, coming in with Salvation Army again stepping up for us. This is not a long-term sustainable plan, and it's not news to us. This isn't news that we have a homeless population, and it's not news where those needs are. That's why the Center on Health for Housing was brought forward. I mean, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I do disagree with your, your assessment that we didn't know this before now, because we absolutely did, and that's why we know that this is a critical need for this winter. I don't have a problem with putting this money towards this project. I know that there are funds out there, emergency service grants, that need to be applied to this. It is absolutely critical that we protect our community, and that we protect these people who need this. But I also have, I have constituents who are having problems meeting their rent. I mean, we're talking about seven hundred thousand dollars. Another criteria we need to be looking at is ensuring that people who are housed stay housed. I mean, we've seen what happened with our rental assistance program. I'm still waiting on one of the businesses who's contacted me to tell me, hey, Aaron, great, thank you very much. We got our business assistance grant from the city. I mean, we have a lot of, a lot of needs in our community right now, and I think, I want to make sure that we're not setting anyone up to fail, and I want to make sure that what we're looking for out of this is, is a very intentional, directed approach towards reducing homelessness and, and establishing people in houses. And I will say, I, I've heard from a number of people who said that this, that your, that the consultant, that John Fallon, created more problems than he resolved. He, he created, I, I've seen some of the emails, I've seen the way he's talked to our service providers. He may have found gaps in our system, but he also created gaps in our system by creating antagonism and stress among the people who are here full-time to serve our community. And I'm sorry, I'm, I've, that's it for now, Chair, I'm going to-
Well, Alderwoman Turner.
Um, I appreciate Alderwoman Conley's comments. I think that they, um-
You're my tone.
Sorry. I appreciate Alderwoman Conley's comments. I believe that they resonate with all of us. I think that this is a subject that we all have a lot of compassion for. We, we care very deeply about the height of the homeless population in our city, and that's evidenced by the fact that we have been asking for a plan for several years now. We're, this isn't news. This isn't new. The only, you know, the, the thing that keeps happening year after year is that the city is very late to the party. It, it seems like every year, a week before November first, we're trying to figure out, what are we going to do? And how do we, how are we going to move forward? And that is not your fault, it's no reflection on the Salvation Army. So I think that Alderwoman Conley raised a very good point with regard to the funding for this project. If we are looking to use the, the Phase Two Cares Act funding, everybody needs to understand, we are now, I believe, about six months into, when we received the Phase One funding, and that money's still not out the door. So just recognize that six months from now, if the funding for this program is through the Phase Two Cares funding, that money still may not be out the door, and so you, you just need to understand that, because that's the situation that we have now. We have, we made all these plans about what we're going to do with that Phase One, and, and nobody has benefited from that funding. The other thing I think is, you know, I, I think we have to say that it, I know that people make a lot of statements, and, you know, and, but some, some things can't go unchallenged. There, there have been, and there are, very good, responsible agencies in this city that have been working with the homeless and vulnerable populations for many years, and they have been doing assessments, and they have been moving people into services, and they have been moving people into housing. That has been happening. Has it been happening to the level that every homeless person is off the streets? No, but I don't think that we can say that it hasn't been happening, because it, it has been happening. So, you know, we, we just have to, we have to have a plan, so that every year, at the end of October, we're not here trying to figure out what to do and, and how to move forward. Now, having said that, and, you know, the, the other thing, too, is that when we are at this point, then whenever there are questions that are raised, legitimate questions, that would be raised with any other project or any other grant or any other ordinance that comes before us, when there are legitimate questions being raised, then it becomes, we are the worst people in the world, because we don't want to house the homeless, and that's not true. I think that we all have to be responsible stewards of monies that are going to be spent. So having said that, I do have a couple of questions about the budget. This is a six-month budget for the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a six-month project, which would run from November first to March thirty-first. So am I, is it correct that I'm seeing that in this budget, starting January first, there are raises for staff?
No, minimum wage does go up in January. I had planned on paying them eleven from the very beginning, so that, that incentive for working a hard job, I suppose.
So that's what the increase is, because-
There's no increase, but yeah, it's in there, that's not just my budget. I used, I used a budget form, and that, that's a reminder that in January, it goes up to eleven.
Okay.
But the way it's calculated is it's eleven from the beginning.
Okay, so it is the same rate from the beginning?
Right.
Okay, so this, then my second question is, there's a program manager and a program director for this, for this six-month program?
I don't think there's a program manager and a director.
I thought that's what I saw in the budget.
It's on the second page there. There's a director and there's a program director. Is that what you mean?
Okay, so.
The program director is what's going to make sure that these services are happening. It's, that's the person that's going to, you know, make plans with the COC. It's the person that's going to make sure that they have what they need. They're going to be the ones making sure the meals are there on time, the meal train that was, I mean, it's good, but sometimes it can be very stressful. But that's, that's one of my solutions to having that added value. This person's going to make sure that this is more than just warehousing people. That's my plan.
Okay, that's the program director's-
That's the program director, yeah.
And what's the program manager's responsibility?
I don't, I'm not sure what, I don't have a program manager.
I thought I saw one in there. Okay, so there is no program manager, there's just a program director?
Right.
Okay.
And those are the only two full-time positions, the program director and the director.
Okay, so the program director, that's the, the position that you just described. Then the director is?
The director is the director of the shelter. Oversees everything, the staff.
Okay, and then, it's my understanding that Fifth Street Renaissance and Washington Street Mission have committed, I believe, something around five or six staff at eight hours a week? That would be-
A little more than that. Washington Street Mission was twenty hours a week. Fifth Street Renaissance, I believe, was, it came out to about a hundred hours a week altogether of-
For both?
Volunteer, yeah, from those two agencies.
Okay, so, so they're committing a hundred hours of staff time, where they're going to pay their, they're going to pay that staff to come in, and, and they will be, they will be, basically be working under the direction of the program director?
Right.
Okay, so why isn't that included in the budget?
Well, two things here, sure.
Why, why wouldn't that be part of?
Well, the first thing is, I wanted to make sure that it was, we have the people there to control the population, and then we have the people that bring the services. That's what I was thinking. The other part of this that I, I wanted to say is that this is by receipt, and something that I, I'm, it is important to me, is that I don't waste money, and so my first and foremost, I'm going to be a good steward of this money. If we can replace it with these people, we won't turn in receipts for them. We're not, we're not getting anything extra out of this. You guys aren't writing the Salvation Army a two hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred, whatever, check, and saying, here you go, make this happen. It's, when we pay the employees, I send the bill, and it's paid back. So it's two seventy-five, but it doesn't have to be two seventy-five. The other thing that- The other thing that I worry about is when we get COVID in the shelter, it's gonna take more staff. There's so many unknowns in this, and that's why it is high. I hope that at the end of the season, it's not that high. But with all, with everything, I just think we could have a real mess on our hands.
We already have a real mess on our hands.
Oh, sure we do.
So then my last question is, the, the money that's in the budget for, I think it said food, so, so you guys will be providing food, we won't have to rely on a meal train?
No, no, I, there's only $5,000 in there, that's not gonna go very far. That's for the times when the meal train doesn't work or the breakfast that we, I mean, we didn't, it's, breakfast is probably gonna be on us. We're talking three meals now for 65, 70 people.
So we're still gonna be reliant upon a meal train?
Yes.
And did that work last year?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay, but are we, do we have more people this year than, do you anticipate we're gonna have more people in the shelter than we had last year? The concern that I have is, I saw, I saw requests for people to provide meals at Tent City, and they were talking about providing meals for like 40, 50 people. And if you look at that, that's, that's a big chunk of money. So I just, I'm concerned.
Is your concern that there's not enough on there, or that it's on there?
My concern is that if we are reliant upon this meal train, which I never thought was a good idea, that, are we gonna, are, do we have people in our community that are gonna commit that amount of money for the meal train for six months? Because when you start off, everybody's all excited and, and, you know, and they're, they're all, yeah, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this. And then you have Thanksgiving, and then you have Christmas, and then you have people rebounding from Christmas, and everybody's not as enthusiastic as they were November 1st.
My experience from last year is that it did go well. It lasted for the, what, we had six months, and then when we moved it and continued on because of COVID, it still happened. We, and there was a handful of times, maybe five. And the problem with that is you don't know until usually dinnertime, but that's part of the program manager, that'd be their job to make sure that that's coming that night. And if not, we can, we can respond. The other thing is, we have a kitchen here, and one of the, the employees of Washington Street Mission has this food license, so if we need to cook a meal, if we need to warm something up, we can do that legally, the kitchen's licensed and everything. So, yeah.
So wouldn't it, I mean, I, wouldn't it be more beneficial to the, to the program if you, if you looked at doing something like that instead of relying on the goodness of strangers to feed people that are coming in?
Possibly. It works and people are signed up for it, and I've been doing this for a week now. And we're worried about getting people in, so I hadn't worried about that yet.
Okay.
So, I, I appreciate it, for sure. You're right.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate everyone's comments. This is, you know, a hot topic in our community, and, and I do agree that no matter what fund we take this money from, I don't care, we always find a way to pay for things. We need to fix this issue. I also agree that this has been a longstanding problem. I've heard some comments about, you know, the city shouldn't really be in this business. And if that is the case, you know, while we, when we do this, I've definitely had some conversations with other aldermen and women, and, you know, we're sort of getting to that point where we're trying to figure this out and be done with it and, and get it fixed. So with that said, I, you know, in this, in this budget, Mr. Mayor, that you sent, it says something here for $25,000 for food and supplies, and another 25 for service in the email that we got, so are you guys gonna have money for food, or?
I see 125 under Support Services, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, in the email that we have received, me and, me and some of the members, it was $25,000 for staff benefits, insurance, bike and taxes, $25,000 for food and supplies, and $25,000, it was $200,000 for, for employees, and, and, you know, looks like another $75,000 for, for these three things. No druthers, I just wanna, I just wanna, if that's the case, that's fine. I mean, it sounds like you got some, some working capital to feed the people, and, you know, we need to do what we need to do. I, I ask for this to be first because it's, it's a hot topic and we, we definitely need to, to figure it out. You know, I'm supportive in this. I do have my worries about if we go through this through the CARES Act way, and, you know, apparently we're at like step 10 with this, and we need to go through some other steps for public meetings and stuff. So I do worry about, you know, us, us going after it in a CARES Act way and it not going through and being declined, and now we're in a, a doozy. So how do we, have we thought about that? Do we got a backup plan? If, if, if some way, when we submit this up and go through the process, it, it, it seems, are you thinking corporate fund? Mr. Mayor, I don't know if that'd be the will of the council, but.
Go ahead.
Might talk to me.
Yeah, thanks for asking that. You know, as far as the food goes, we could put more into the budget, but we're discussing that it's too much. I mean, so from my perspective, I think, you know, what's the cost? I think we need to do, last year, we got beat up because of the not having skilled individuals there. And it was, so to get skilled individuals, you have to pay more. It's more than a minimum wage job. And I would encourage anybody to go there and see what they do. I think that's really, like we have the ride along with the police officers, I think we need to do that. That's not calling anybody out, so don't take offense. I think the Center for Health and Housing, you know, everybody, I think 99% of the community supported it. Wrong location. It passed, they could have done it, it didn't go. So we just need to move on from there. So we can argue all about the past, but we need to learn from it, move to the future. So let's fast forward to today. With the pandemic, the way it's happened, I'm not sure the Center for the Health and Housing was the right thing. We could have been committed for millions of dollars and say, what the heck? So really, the point of housing, successful housing, John Fallon can talk to you, you might not agree with his opinion, but he is a wealth of knowledge because he's been at it for well over a decade, dealing with the hardest to house, and that's what we're talking about, the hardest to house, people on the streets. Not the ones at Helping Hands already, not the ones at Contact Ministries, they all do great work, Inter-City Mission does great work, I knew them back in my banking days. They all do great work. It's the collective effort, and the ones that are falling through the cracks are on the streets, plain and simple. It's a gap in our community. So we can either acknowledge it and move on, that's what we're trying to do, that's why we have this each and every year. So the Center for Health and Housing, yes, that was gonna do it, nighttime services, not necessarily daytime services. Nobody knew what the intent was. I'd ask everybody to read that SJR Morning paper on Monday morning, I believe it's Monday morning after the vote was taken, or the day after. Mike Torshin from probation, adult probation from the jail, said that they were working to do release of prisoners to that location. Did any of you know that? Anybody know that? I didn't know that. I did not know that. And it's all about transparency. So we're being transparent with regards to that. So with the budget, we have to make the commitment. I asked Corporation Council, my intent is, if there's a delay in funding, we're not gonna leave the Salvation Army out there hanging to dry. We're going to, when the invoice comes in, we will pay the invoice if they need the money. If they have a cash flow, uh, uh, problem, we're gonna take care of it. You know why? We received $3 million just this week from the CARES Act reimbursement to the city that nobody thought we'd get, we did get it, the $4.8 million. Thanks to our efforts in tightening our belts, and thanks to our efforts to put the corporate fund in the best shape it's ever been, we're able to make our way through this pandemic a lot better than other communities. And that's because we worked hard at it, and we've been proactive in that regards. But we're gonna continue to do that. So with regards to the question of the money, to me, the money's secondary. I think paying up to $300,000, that's why it was in there when I talked to Corporation Council, why do we want to come back for more? Everybody says we need to do this, what if we don't have food? What do we do? We can come back and wait for another disbursement. Originally, when it was drafted, that's why that's in there. I said, well, maybe we should make it up to 300,000, but 275,000 sounds better, you know, it's not as much as 300,000. So when Captain Eddie presented the budget, it was 275,000, and I feel it's may not, I think it could be enough if everything goes as planned, but if a pandemic hits, who knows? I mean, you start quarantining, and that's the beauty of this location, it's bigger, you can quarantine people, but you're not, you're gonna need, with the pandemic, you need people and spaces, people in spaces. Because we all know what happens, you have to quarantine people, you have to be able to help them, assess them, and, you know, move in that direction. So, you know, we're here to make that commitment with the funding, we will make that commitment. The buckets are, real simple, CARES Act, I think that should be the high priority, move in that direction. I actually talked to Director McCarthy.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, what, Alderman Gregory had a line of questions to go through.
Yeah, it was on the funding.
Yeah, and so I think we made your point. Alderman Gregory, do you have more questions you wanted to go through?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, if, if we do somehow, things get, whatever, that, that we, you know, we prepared to make sure y'all taken care of. My, my other question, just real quickly, was, now if in event we do go into COVID, are we planning on utilizing the building across the street, the Madison?
No, no, we've got a plan for that. There's two places where, and that's one of the beauties of this building, it's huge. And so, actually, we're installing showers in the old store, which is a big open area, and that's gonna be a quarantine area for symptoms. So if you have a fever, if you, you go there, and then we get tested, we're working with SIU, we're working with the County Health Department, they, they, you know, they said we're first on the list when they can get some, the rapid tests and all of that. And then we have another area that also now has a shower across, it was the old administration building, with individual rooms, so then we can take people all the way over there to keep them away from the population. So we've got this whole system worked out to, to house that if it, if and when. I hate, I want to say if, but it's probably gonna be when.
I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, next is Alderman DeSenzel.
Thank you, Chair. Is this going to be an inclusive facility? Who will be allowed in? Is it just families, or can anyone come in?
Anybody over the age of 18.
Anyone over the age of 18, so no children will be allowed in the facility?
No, we can't do that.
Next is Alderman Donilon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Captain, I, first of all, I just want to thank you for your work and the Salvation Army's efforts. The community wouldn't be the same without it, without those efforts, and the fact that you're willing to step up, probably on short notice. I did want to ask one question specifically to you, and then, what, what city staff member have you been working with? Who's been coordinating this project from the city?
Mostly Mayor.
Okay, well, then I'll direct it to the mayor. Mayor, I think one of the things that I'm hearing around this room, and, you know, we had an ordinance introduced last week, and, you know, when something in, in your heart's absolutely in the right place, you want to try to find a way to help people that need help the most. Nobody doubts this at the horseshoe. But when this ordinance was introduced, I, one of the first calls I got is they, from one of my colleagues, they said, hey, did you know this was going to include a day center? I said, no, I had no idea, so. And I didn't really, and if you look at the documentation that we have from, from the clerk, it doesn't say what department is coordinating this effort, so it turns out that you're coordinating, it sounds like at the mayor's office, which is no problem at all. But projects like this, it's extreme, let's, let's be honest about it, it's October 27th, Captain, we have no choice but to pass this ordinance. We have no choice. But projects of this magnitude and issues of this magnitude, we all need to be briefed on the development as we're moving along. And it might have been moving very fastly, I don't doubt that. But we want to be champions of things like, like this. I hear a lot of questions around this, around this horseshoe this evening, that should have been asked, you know, a month or two ago. Where's the money coming from? How are we gonna pay for it? Who's gonna do what? We don't know, the reason we're asking is because nobody's talked to us about any of it.
Sure.
So please don't be offended by the question.
That's okay, I don't have a dog in that fight.
And, and again, let's just cut to the end, we don't have a choice. This, this, I, I think it's safe to say this ordinance is going to pass, but in the future, and Alderman Turner, Alderman Turner, you said it, we know we're going to need something next year. Let's work together on, you know, making sure everybody's involved, and then we, then we can't sit up here and whine about not knowing. I think that would eliminate a lot of, a lot of these 101 questions that we could ask months, weeks before. And who knows, maybe we'll have an idea or something that we've heard from one of our constituents that might be worth helping make this effort even better.
Alderman Haner?
Yeah, thank you. You know, and you're right, we don't have a choice. My biggest question is, okay, if we use, I, I'm concerned about the CARES Fund. If we, if we would pay for it out of our corporate fund, is it a way, is there a way we can be reimbursed, the corporate fund could be reimbursed down the road? Because if that would be the case, I'd, I'd sponsor, I'd, I'd make the motion that we would take it out of corporate fund because there's just no way that that CARES Fund's gonna be quick enough. It's federal government, and they're slower than the state. I mean, let's be real. The other thing that, that concerns me, or that might be an idea, so people are gonna stay there all day, we still got St. John's Bread Line, so we're, in a way, we're duplicating services. I don't know if there's a way that we can work with St. John's Bread Line to, to, to have them provide lunches, or where we go pick up, or whatever, I don't, I don't know.
Absolutely.
But that would be, you know, I don't want to take away from the great work that they do. You know, and I think everyone wants to see, well, I know, every, everyone wants to see if overall solution to this. But quite frankly, and no offense to my colleagues up here, we're not the experts. What really need, where the solutions need to come from is you and, and the, the different agencies to get together and bring a solution to us, because we'll welcome it. Now, the, the Center for Health and Housing that we passed, I thought that was a very good solution. Was there, was there issues with it? Mayor, you're right, there, I, I never heard that either. But it was, I thought, a very bright light, you know, to, to the end of a dark tunnel. But I think that the solutions have to come from the agencies, because we are not experts. I promise you that we will do whatever we can to help you guys, you know, get to that solution, much like we did with the Center, Center for Health and Housing, and, and that went off the rails, whatever, but, and, and again, that's in the past, but, so, I think, I would like to see in this next six months, for, for the agencies to get together, and this might be a good kickstart to, to a full solution. And, I mean, anybody can say, okay, you want to help the homeless, find them homes, that's, that's the easiest solution, but there's a lot more to it. So I would just, I would just ask that, that the agencies get together and, and some, you would be able to do things a lot quicker without city government, or state government, or federal government involved, trust me. So, because we'll put committees together that'll, that'll bore people to death. So, so I don't know, is, the question is, is can we be reimbursed if we use corporate funds?
That be a question to the mayor, or?
It would be to the mayor, or Val, or whoever, I, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, with regards to, there's a number of ways, one is the CARES Act, the 700,000 that we're having the public forum on. The other one is what happens after the election? Are there another, gonna be another disbursement? So we could, Director McCarthy is continuing that register of receipts. So all the funds that we spend towards a pandemic qualify if funds become available. So, like I said, we're already acknowledged for the 4.8 million, so if there's additional funds come that way, that could be a potential. But it would be through the CARES Act if we are going to be reimbursed, or we could do it through regular CDBG funds, but I'd ask Corporation Counsel or Val, they can weigh in on their opinion as well.
I think Val wanted to talk about something here, but it's pertinent to this, so bring her up.
A couple of things as far as reimbursement, Alderman. HUD doesn't look kindly on us reimbursing ourselves. So the contract that we would write would be with the Salvation Army, so they would want us to reimburse the Salvation Army instead of us loaning them money and then reimbursing the city, okay? So that's kind of how they view that whole thing. We could use regular CDBG funds, but the main reason I wanted to speak up is that I know that we have Josh Sable here from the continuum, and I think Josh could kind of give us a little insight on what they're doing as the continuum to address some of the issues that you brought up. And I know Erin mentioned ESG, which is Emergency Solutions Grants, that's also comes through HUD, that is meant for communities to use for emergency shelters. That's why they're called Emergency Solutions Grants. So Josh, if you want to come.
Josh, run up.
Val, run up.
Uh huh.
Val, real quick.
Yes.
These guys start, how long would it take to get those funds? That's my concern. We're almost stuck having to at least start them off with some corporate money in order to, right?
Well, and I think Josh can answer some of a few of those questions about ESG funds.
He does have a solution.
He does have, he does have a solution to get us started. Then we could go through, if you were to decide that you wanted to use regular CDBG funds, you can do that. However, like I said, there is, we need to understand as a city that the, the Continuum does receive funds called Emergency Solutions Grants that can be utilized and are supposed to be utilized for this very thing. So if we can have him come up and.
Josh, can I come up?
Yeah, as we've been looking at this issue, the, we're sort of in the same spot in terms of CARES Act. The first round of ESG CARES came to the Continuum and out of that $46,900 has been allocated for this effort. So that is something that's available, to be available before the next round of CARES Act money. But even that money has not been released yet. So it is not a perfect solution, but it is at least, you know, a piece of the chunk to this puzzle.
Great. And then, okay, Ralph, you're done. Alderman Connelly?
Thank you. I was in charge, it was my turn again. Can you hear me okay?
I can, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I can't talk with a mask. And Josh, thank you. You and I have spoken about my concern about services being provided to the, to our residents while they're, while they're sheltered in this. Can you speak a little more about some of the plans that the Continuum has to have an active role in, in this, in this winter shelter? Again, it is a five-month plan and I, I hope, you know, none of my comments were taken as in any way, shape or form as being critical of.
Sure.
Of spending these funds on, on ensuring people are safe during this.
Right.
But I also, I would like to see when we get to the end of this, at the end of five months, that we have fewer people who need emergency shelter and more people who have been, been reached and served. So, and we've talked about that at length, so if you wouldn't mind maybe just kind of filling us in on, on what's, what that is, what that looks like.
Absolutely. And I think Captain Eddie's done a good job rallying the other agencies. And so for Fifth Street and Washington Street Mission to come alongside him, that's a, that's a great thing. Fifth Street at the Cooling Center has been doing some incredible work. They've now been getting people onto the coordinated entry list. And that's something that Jeff didn't mention, but some of his staff is trained to do that as well. So that gets anybody that's there on the pathway to housing, which is a beautiful thing. But alongside that, Fifth Street can help with getting people on SOAR and different benefits and providing other services around that. Other agencies, Memorial Behavior Health Path Program will be present, SIU Community Health. So Jeff has done a great job, I think, lining that, lining that effort up. I think it's a more robust effort than our community's probably perhaps ever had in that regard. We've also developed an advisory team. So that includes Department of Public Health, SIU, other agencies that basically have formed a little group around Jeff so that if issues come up, if there's COVID concerns, if, if any of the clients at the Winter Warming Center have concerns, it's a place for them to be able to air grievances and, and have people speak into solutions quickly. So in that regard, I think there's a lot going on to get agencies involved in this effort and agencies are happy to partner. You know, the real question, we're, we're in a relatively similar place as we were last year as we, as we approached the winter months in terms of the number of people who are unsheltered. And, you know, I think the real, the real issue we're getting at is that our, our system to address homelessness is, is more or less stuck. I mean, we've seen some incredible things over the course of last year. Those ESG funds have, have made it possible for Helping Hands to do a rapid rehousing program. That, that has housed over 30 people, around 30 people. And that's, that is, that is not a small thing. That's a huge thing. And that's a picture of more of what we need as a community. It's, it's housing and support, right? So we need, we need an expansion of permanent supportive housing, but also case management. Mayor, you talk about that one-on-one interaction. That's what our case managers are, are doing throughout all these organizations. But right now, we don't have the resources to increase that capacity, right? So we need, we need an expansion of supportive services and then housing services if we're really going to address this issue. And, and the Continuum, I agree, the Continuum needs to paint a clear picture for that strategy. You know, there is a, a long, a long-term strategic planning effort going on and that will, that will help. I think it's an important thing and COVID has sort of made that a little bit more of a complicated effort, but I'm confident that, that by that time this year, by this time next year, that, that plan will be something that we're talking about in terms of what we're executing. But even until then, a few years ago, the Continuum put in place what's called the Crisis Response System. So it's a, it's a system of street outreach, coordinated entry, supportive services and housing. And that, that's the strategy we're working to execute now and, and without a doubt. You know, we have people who are unsheltered. Our system's not functioning the way we want it to as a community. And so we'll, we're going to continue to improve that system and, and hopefully be able to paint a really clear picture for you all how you can support it.
That's wonderful of you.
Go ahead. I don't want to delay this any longer. Okay, so then Alderman Hannaher?
Can, can we do this in, in, I mean, we've debated this thing for, for an hour now and can we, can we push it to debate? And, and if we've got other questions, we can always have, reach out and get questions answered and have, have Mr. Griffin send out the, the answers to our questions during, for the next week and.
Yeah, the motion right now is for discussion if Alderman Redpath like to attract that.
I'll change it to debate. Second.
All right. But I do have one question. I really need to know what, what the, what we're using the CARES funding for other than this. I mean, it was $4.8 million. What, you know what? You don't have to answer that tonight because we really need to move this along, but please, that's one of my questions to you. I'd like to know what you, what, what we have planned for that money.
For the future funds?
Right. And if we can get a deadline on when we're, an idea when this money's going to be allocated because I agree with Alderman Hannaher. We, and the Mayor, the Mayor knows it too. This is something we got to do. It's, it's in our face right now. We got to do it now and, and we're going to, Captain, God love you for what you do. It's, it's, this is a tough thing to take on and, and, you know, we're going to support you the best we can. And like the Mayor said, we'll find the money someplace. Alderman Miniman?
I second that, Major Eddie. Thank you and the Salvation Army for stepping forward again. What we're seeing here tonight is the best emergency shelter the city's ever put together.
Yeah.
We're going to have 10 times the space as what we had last year. 10 times the space. We're going to open it one month early, earlier than last year.
We opened in October last year.
We've got programming coming in that we did not have last year. It's 24 hours. We're not throwing people out into the elements at eight or nine AM like we had to last year. We've got coordination of effort, which we did not have last year, meaning we're bringing in Washington Street Mission, we're bringing in Fifth Street and some others. So there's a lot of positives here. I think the, the city should take a lot of credit for what we're, we're taking on and what we're providing for continually changing circumstances and facts. We didn't know there's going to be a virus a year ago. We didn't know there's going to be an economic recession for a fifth of our population a year ago. We didn't know we were going to have, whether we call it a second wave or third wave of the virus coming on back at us that may be worse than what we faced at any point in time so far in Sagmont County. So I think the city is stepping forward and everyone around this horseshoe can take credit for that because we're all part of the city government that's making this happen. So we got to stay positive even as we face difficult challenges, Major Eddie. So thanks for taking this on.
Another question. All right. Another question. All those in favor for debate?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for debate. All right, Mr. Clerk, let's get back to our regular.
CWLP 2020, 425. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 21-08-33. Applied channel repair with Platcher Construction Company Incorporated in amount not to exceed $159,941 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, second for consent. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for consent. Mr. Clerk?
2020, 426. An ordinance approving telecommunications contract service agreement with the University of Illinois Board of Trustees on behalf of the University of Illinois Springfield Bank for 15 South Old State Capitol Plaza for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, the second for consent. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries for consent.
Public Safety. An ordinance accepting RFP number FD 21-14 with Evans Construction for Fire Station Number Two, roof replacement and exterior improvements in an amount not to exceed $108,500 for the Springfield Fire Department.
For consent?
Second.
Motion, second for consent. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries for consent.
Public Works. 2020, 427. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of Rock Salt from Cargill Incorporated Salt Division under state contract 21-416 CMS BOSS4-B-16193 in an amount not to exceed $314,568 for the Office of Public Works.
For consent?
Second.
Motion, second for consent. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries.
2020, 428. An ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for reconstruction and construction of the Drawbridge Road between Wallash Avenue and Nottingham Road, MFT Section 19-00485-00-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent?
Second.
Motion, the second for consent. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed?
No.
We got one no, Mr. Clerk. So tell me about put on debate? Yeah. Got put on debate?
I guess so.
It's on debate. Next one, please.
For discussion, this is a bridge project that's been under, under consideration for eight years now. The bridge is in horrific condition. We've had two emergency repairs so far, one three years ago and one last summer. The emergency repairs are costly for the city to undertake. So that's part of the history of this. The, the underside of the bridge was in part constructed with timbers. They are in poor condition. So Alderman Redpath, this is, this particular entrance to Sherwood services about 400 homeowners. There's only two, three ways to get into Sherwood and this is one of the three ways. So.
I'm not opposed to this, Alderman. I got a problem with the process. So I'm not going to hold this up. It'll be, maybe it'll be a nine-to-one vote. I'm just looking for a little fairness out of Public Works. Do you have any questions for the Public Works Director right now or do you want to do that next week? I'll do it in private. All righty. Moving on. Next one.
All in favor.
Oh, we got to do, okay. All in favor, debate?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020, 429. A resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $170,000 may be used for the Drawbridge Road Reconstruction Project, MFT Section Number 19-00485-00-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Move to debate.
Second.
Motion, the second for debate. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries for debate.
2020, 430. An ordinance authorizing contract with Matthew St. Lipinski for the purchase of real estate located at 1130 North Tenth Street in an amount of $41,700 in closing costs and an amount of $2,500 for a total amount not to exceed $44,200 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent?
No. Move to debate.
Okay, so we know we got to go on debate. So I'll recognize the motion for debate. All those, any discussion? Who seconded your motion for debate? Alderman Donilon?
Thank you.
He did. Any discussion? Nope? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries for debate.
2020, 431. An ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $42,550 for the relocation of personal property located at parcel SR 0064 located at 1130 North Tenth Street relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to debate.
Motion and a second for debate. Any discussion?
Until the citizens of Ward Six are taken care of, every single one of these will be moved to debate.
What's the, I'm sorry.
Alderman Hannaher?
So what's the latest on it? Where, where are we at on, are you talking about the ones that, that we met in executive session?
That have all been here? Yes. Your guess would be as good as mine.
Do we have any updates that we need to go?
I know some offers were made. I know one was accepted, but there's a lot more to be done. So until it's taken care of, this is where we are. Sorry, everybody.
Do you like the Mayor to just bring that, talk about that on or?
If anybody can shed some light, I'd love to.
They bottomed to the end of the meeting, but they're all in process, so can you give an update?
Nate's right there. He was hiding in the back there inside, behind the wall.
Yeah, that's correct. We've ordered appraisals and a couple of offices have been made on, on two of the properties and then we've been assessing the, Hanson had their structural engineer evaluate the various properties, have been contacted. And we also had a couple contractors evaluate the, the various properties and I just obtained the final estimate today. So we're going to run through them and then come up with a game plan for the rest of them.
How many in total were there?
Seven, I believe.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Director Bottom.
Thanks, Director.
All in favor, debate?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries for debate.
2020, 432. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate in an amount of $101,000 for fee simple title to real property located on 800 South Ninth Street, parcel number SR 0304 pursuant to court order of condemnation, case entitled The City of Springfield versus Henry Nelch and Son Incorporated, ETAL, case number 2020-ED-000005 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for debate. Second.
Motion, second for debate. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries for debate.
Finance. 2020, 434. An ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of the 2020 Burn Justice Assistance Grant, number 2020-DJ-BX-0100 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance in an amount of $89,102 and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the grant in the grant funds for Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent?
Second.
Motion second for consent, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries for consent.
2020-435, an ordinance authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with Adams Fourth Holdings LLC for financial assistance for the property located at 322 East Adams Street utilizing Central Area Tax and Commit Finance Funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development for an amount not to exceed the lower of 30% of the total project cost or $1 million.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Second.
Motion second for consent, any discussion? Director Hazel?
All right, at your seats this evening, you'll see something that we've decided we should provide to you whenever we have something come through economic development and anything that's come through the EDC. It'll look something like that, it says EDC Recommendation for Council, and so what we did is, this is the document that is provided to our EDC when we meet with them, and then at the top, what we've decided we want to do for you is to let you know the recommendation from the Economic and Community Development Commission. So this one was the Economic and Community Development Commission voted to recommend approval of the Adams Fourth Holding TIF request. What was read on the ordinance is not how it was voted on by the EDC. The EDC recommended that the request to be rebated future increment generated at the site through the end of the TIF not to exceed $1 million, and that's the language that was recommended, the OPED recommended to them, and they approved, so that's the language going forward. So the vote was five yes, no, and there were two absent. So I'm going to ask David Lee and Tony Kocomo if they'd like to come up here if you have any questions specifically for them, but also Abby's here to address any other questions with TIF-related, anything TIF-related.
So what we're voting on is exactly what came, it's future increment?
Yes, future increment, yes.
Okay.
Yes, future increment.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, the language that's right there, the based entirely on future generated, God forgot my glasses time, increment and contingent upon final occupancy. So that is what we would be voting on this evening.
So they're putting up $3 million, and we're going to put up potentially $1 million?
Potentially, yes. We'll have David, David Lee and Tony Kocomo come up if you have any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. The question was, are we doing for main, yes, we're raising equity funding of $2 million for the project.
Okay. And you estimate that you need up to possibly a million dollars in TIF money, but not, that's not determined yet, correct?
Based on the language we went before the EDC, the total $3 million based on future increments, I guess that there's some uncertainty about how much of that could be generated over the life of the, the life of the TIF.
Okay. Anything else?
Alderman Donilon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I, first of all, I want to thank you for your interest in Springfield and investing in downtown. It's wonderful. We need, we need projects like this. What I like about this proposal is the fact that you're really asking for a percentage of your success. If you don't complete the project, you don't get one dime from the city. If you're not successful in paying the taxes, you don't get one dime from the city. It's a win-win for everyone, and I wish you all the best.
Yeah, Alderman McConley?
Thank you. Gentlemen, I echo Alderman Donilon. I appreciate this really innovative project. I'm looking forward to sitting on your rooftop bar. I also would just like to, to thank you in the short narrative of the project, and this was not something that we talked about, because I've stopped in the farmer's market to see what you guys were working on, but you do not intend to have video gaming.
Yes, that's correct.
And I, I appreciate that. As our mayor has pointed out, we, we have quite an expansion of video gaming, and I appreciate you coming in and, and not adding to that, so thank you very much. I wish you all the best. Again, very much looking forward to coming up, going to the rooftop.
And as the home Alderman for this, I'd just like to thank you for investing downtown, and what I really like about this is that you're allowing Springfieldians to invest in this themselves. It's what, I think it was like 500 bucks, and you can do crowdfunding, and you're going to do crowdfunding for, I think the minimum is about 500 bucks and get shares and the ownership of the company. So I think it's cool that, you know, that it allows people in Springfield to put their money to work in Springfield rather than have it go to some mutual fund that's in New York or something, you know? So I think, appreciate this new concept, well, it's not new, but it's kind of new to us, but I appreciate you doing that here, and I'm glad we're going to be able to make, take part in this, and great.
Yeah, we've had huge response, more than I've ever seen in any project in any city I've ever worked in, and I think it speaks to the mayor and your council and the support we've gotten from everyone here, and the fact that a couple of thousand people from Springfield have come in and issued excitement about the project and the opportunity to invest with us, and it is very unique. It's never been done really in anywhere southern Illinois or, you know, south Wyoming. So this is very exciting, very unique, and it speaks well for this kind of investment going forward in this city.
Great, well, thank you very much. Alderman Redpath?
You know, this is really unusual, because usually people come in here to get a liquor license and just because they want video poker machines, so it's, it's pretty strange. So that makes, makes me feel better about your plan. You've worked it out that you, you understand what's going on, you don't have to depend on video poker to do it, and it's, seriously, we, every time we get a liquor license, they're all looking for the, video poker machines.
I think we've tapped into that.
If you can speak into the mic, sir, they're having a little problem.
I think we've tapped into that, sir, that there's a, there's a surprisingly large demand for more upscale dining and food and beverage than, than you realize, and we've, we've been swamped with that kind of excitement, and that, that's hard to take as a developer, you know? People love what we're doing.
That's, it really pleased that you chose the spot you did. We need, we need a help down there, and it's going to, it's going to probably be successful. Good luck.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion, any questions? All right, motion was for consent, all in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries for consent.
General City Business, 2020-436, an ordinance authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement Number 18-SR-0003 with an authorizing payment to Central Illinois Food Bank Incorporated for food pantry assistance due to COVID-19 from October 1st, 2020 through April 1st, 2021 utilizing Community Development Block Grant CARES Act funds in an amount not to exceed $100,000 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion second.
Motion second for consent, any discussion? Alderman McConley?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. Mayor, is this the money that we'd already committed to the food bank, or is this an additional $100,000 to the food bank? Do you know?
Director Hazel?
Yeah, yeah, so this is the money that we, we approved on the original amended plan, yes. And the food bank representatives apologized they couldn't be here this evening, but I told them we've gone through all this process before and that I would handle it for them, so. Any other questions? No?
I don't see any. I think you're good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor for consent?
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries.
2020-437, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, for consultation on the procurement of a new integrated, integrated resource planning system for the City of Springfield in an amount not to exceed $184,000.
Move for debate?
I got a motion for debate, is there a second?
Debate, second.
A motion, second for debate and discussion, Alderman Donilon?
I assume it's Director McCarty. Could you just explain what we're doing here and what this ordinance is all about?
Well, actually, Joe's monicing is a big part of this as well, being the head of ISD, but the ERP system is the backbone of city operations, as you would know, Alderman Donilon, coming from your previous position. This is accounting, payroll, timekeeping, can be inventory management, can be budget. All of those things are accounts payable, all of that. Our CGI system that we have now, we've, we've upgraded once or twice, and we are at the point now where there is a desire to look to see what else is out there. We implemented the current system back in, I think it was in 2009 or so, and there's a couple of things about this contract, the reason for it is implementing an ERP system is very time-consuming, and it's very difficult to do. So what this contract entails is the, not just helping us put together an RFP, which is quite extensive, but it's also has to do with a intensive needs assessment is included in this, as well as help with actual implementation. When this is all said and done, assuming we, if we are to go with a different ERP system, and that, quite frankly, is what we're looking at, the savings could be substantial, and I'll just give you an idea, we pay about $700,000 a year just in maintenance fees for our current ERP system. Bloomington has one that could be a potential for us that we think we like, and there'll be others out there as well, and they're paying less than $200,000 a year. So, I mean, this could pay for itself, and just, I think Ann Arbor, Michigan, we talked to them, their payback period for their new ERP where they did a complete transition, and it might have been from CGI, but I don't remember, was two and a half years payback period. So because we're coming near the end of our contract, and when I say near the end, it's still a couple of years out, but the implementation of something like this is roughly a year and a half to two years at least, so we're trying to get started on it early. But the reason for the contract, like I said again, is because we need assistance to do that. It's just so in-depth, and I did talk to Joe about this. Joe, if you don't know, this was his life before. This is the kind of work he did. He said this type of work, what the services that we're getting from GFOA in the private arena would be somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. He said that's a fact, so we're getting a pretty good deal.
Thanks for that update. Alderman Haneyar?
Yeah, Bill, I, I know before I retired from the state, the state was involved in a huge ERP project that's ate them alive, basically.
Yeah, I remember that.
I'm concerned about that, but you're looking for a drop-in system, you're not looking to develop our own and all that.
No, there are several government municipal related systems out there that would be very good for us and less costly than where we're at right now.
Yeah, I'm sure that the, the people in this room that work for the state are still battling that, and the cost overruns were enormous, so, yeah, that, as long as we're not going that route, I, I would definitely support.
No, sir. And I remember, I believe the state brought in a consultant, and I won't say the name, but I do recall that it was extremely expensive. This is pocket change compared to that.
Alderman Redpath?
Bill, why, why are we running at $700,000 and everybody else is running so much less?
It's old system.
It's the system we have, and when you have the system that we have, we, the system was installed back in 2008 or '09. I wasn't here for that. I don't know any of the decision-making that went into it, but what we have found is we have a lot, we have a really, really large system, and we're not even using probably less than 50% of its capability. We're paying for a lot of capability we don't need, quite frankly.
So that's why it's that much harder, you think?
And, and because it's a sole source situation, they get to tell us what we pay. We really don't have much of an option. When you've got the backbone of the, of the city operations here, there's not much, you don't really have a lot of ability to dictate to them what you're going to pay, they, it's the other way around.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to change my motion to consent.
Second.
All right, we change your motion to second for consent, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of consent?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
2020-438, an ordinance authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement Number 18-SR-0010 with authorizing payment to Visions 1908 Incorporated for property located at 801 South 11th Street utilizing Community Development Block Grant Funds in an amount not to exceed $150,000 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Second. Motion and a second for discussion? Let's start discussion, Director Hazel?
All right, again, also at your seats this evening, you have the EDC recommendation to the council. The Economic and Community Development Commission voted to recommend approval of the Visions 1908 CDBG request for no more than $150,000 in eligible expenses to rehab a public facility with the national objective of benefiting low to moderate income individuals. If you'll notice the way I worded this is because when we do CDBG, we haven't had as much experience talking and discussing at council about CDBG funds, and one of the national objectives that we always have to look for is either if it benefits low to moderate income individuals, slum and blight, there, there are several different initiatives that we have to look at first and foremost. So I worded it this way so that you know that the national objective that we're looking towards to fund a public facility is, is to benefit low to moderate income individuals. This evening I have Teresa Haley here with Representative Visions 1908, and Tim Allen, who is in the Back to School Stay in School program, and also Joey Morris from my office who manages CDBG funds is here to answer any additional questions you might have.
Mr. Chair, real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
We didn't get a chance to do it, but Coach Allen here is a coach of SHG Basketball, and I wanted to congratulate him formally up here for, after 72 years or something like that. He finally made state, and then COVID took it away from him, so I did want to, my thought is, we need to at least do that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Haley, and thank you all so much for allowing us to speak tonight. First and foremost, I want to thank the Office of Planning and Economic Development for their hard work and their attention that they've given to the application for the CDBG funding. These sources are critical to continue the efforts to provide a community-based assistance to Springfield disadvantaged population, such as the stewardship provided by the Office, and this council is imperative to the success of the ongoing endeavor. The careful consideration by the Office reveals that the submission application on behalf of Visions 1908 is in accordance with the subscribe requires, our requirements for CDBG funding and underlying programmatic strategic plans in concert and definition of the community's needs. Visions 1908 was created a structure and a foundation for this community-based initiative to flourish with the assistance of the CBDG funding and resources in a responsible and a progressive manner. The citizens of Springfield are once again watching to ensure that this body acts within the bounds of fairness and justice regarding the administration of these public funds. I would like to keep my comments along the lines and keep our conversation about Visions 1908 and its accordance with the requirements and regulations. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have further concerns or assistance. Thank you for your attention to this matter. We are requesting funds for Visions 1908 to help with the structure. We purchased a building that has been closed down for over five years. When we got in the building, there are a lot of things that needed to be done. First of all, the roof. It was literally raining inside of this building. We had plywood put up, we had it replastered probably five or six times. We contacted several roofing companies in the Springfield areas for bids. We knew that we were trying to apply for TIF funds and CBDG funds, but this was an emergency. As you know, it's cold outside right now. We had buckets in our building, trying to secure the building until we could come before city council to get approval for the $150,000 that we needed to continue the renovations. So we want you to know that the roof repair that had to be done on an emergency basis, and we asked that if we can get emergency funds in advance, and we were told no, but we could not hold off on getting our roof repaired, so that amount has been removed from the scope of work that needed to be done. We have contracted with an architect, and you have a copy of his scope of work and other materials. We are registered and in good standings, and I provided you with a copy of a certificate from the Secretary of State. We are a non-for-profit organization and a 501(c)(3). At this time, our building will house our Back to School Stay in School program. It has been around for approximately 25 years. We have a 99% graduation rate. Our kids either graduate or the next year they return to their home school. Some of you know Coach Allen, so I'm going to turn it over to him, and Coach Allen, you have to tell them the next page for the PowerPoint. They have it up for us. Thank you.
Start on the first page.
I think you can go ahead, we have.
Yeah, we go.
Yeah, we have it here.
That's the last page. We got the first one.
Yeah, that's the last page.
That's the last page. There's a cover page and first page. So we want the public to be able to see this presentation as well. There you go.
My name's Tim Allen, I've been, I'm the director of the Back to School Stay in School Academy. We're formerly an alternative school, but our vision was to do better for the kids. Our vision was to take them out of church settings and put them into a building they could call their own, so we changed our name this year as we are Academy. Next, next page. Founded by Rudy Davenport in 2000, you guys might remember a case where kids got kicked out of school at Decatur, and they were looking for alternative, and they were kicked out of school without an alternative. So we, we, our school provides kids who don't have an alternative, so if they do something that strenuous or do something that the school deems them unsafe to be in the district, we still provide them with, with school. So we were founded in 2000. Albert Betts took over. He's still there. He's been a principal at Southeast. He's been a principal at Grant Middle School. He's been a principal all over. Still loves the kids. He says he's going to retire every day, but he's still there every day working with the kids. Next page. The purpose is to improve resource equity, ensure college and career readiness, improve in teaching, improve discipline. Next page. We started at Zion Baptist Church. We had one classroom, and we taught one subject with one teacher. Then we moved on to Calvary Baptist Church, where we were there for 12 years. Each one of these places were nice, but they couldn't, they didn't give the, the kids the sense of pride they needed to, to keep continuing education, or the space or the room we need. Some of the challenges you have in churches are funerals, meetings, or the kids are too loud, so that for them being in the church, if you ride past abundant faith and you see abundant faith, you look at that as a church. So the kids say, hey, I graduated from the church. You're like, oh, what, what is that? But now that, now having a building with the proper upgrades that we need, the kids will have some sense of pride, and the kids that we deal with need that pride, need that, that building they can call their own. Next page. This is our current location, and we've done a lot of work on it from when we, when we got there, but it's we got there. But it's still a lot of work that needs to be done. For the kids to go in the building, the school, it has to be approved through the district, has to be approved with walkthroughs. And we want to have a building where you don't have to worry about some of the other buildings. We had leaks in. We had to deal with the toilets breaking down. And those things make it hard to teach or another distraction for the kids. So having a building to call our own, me having an office to meet with, meet with staff or meet with parents is very critical for us. So this has been, been a blessing. I can't wait to get the kids back. Next page. So not only do we, we house kids, but we're successful at what we do. 99% graduation. So when we say that, when we get a kid to senior year, we do whatever we can to make sure they graduate. And I think having a building that's updated and upgraded will just amplify that. I think we'll have more kids. And after COVID comes back, we're going to get a lot of kids in because they're going to be going to school, and there's going to be different issues. We have kids that range from, they can't deal with being around other kids. They have mental issues where they can't deal with other kids, or just don't want to be around other kids, or their behavior permits them from being in the district. So after COVID, our numbers could skyrocket. And having a building that's update, upgraded with the proper things will help us do what we need to do best. Next page. Enrollment statistics. We range from about 35 to 50 kids. And like I said, that number could go up. Each year, we have anywhere from five to seven seniors. We had a big class in 2017. We're, this will be, this year will actually be our biggest class. We'll have eight graduates. And when I tell you these, these kids are kids who come in with two credits, three credits, and, and we're able to get them to graduation. We have a minimum classes, which are computer classes that are by the district. So these kids come in with two credits, three credits, were never thinking about graduation, and we pushed them towards that. And they get to walk down the aisle with their class. So if you're from Springfield, you graduate with Springfield. You're from Lanford, you graduate with Lanford. You're from Southeast, you graduate with, with Southeast. Next page. The point of it is, our program saves lives. And having $150,000 in upgrades, that the kids, that the staff don't have to worry about this breaking down, or this leaking, or we can't have school because this doesn't work, that helps our kids. That helps our program, and that helps us push forward. Our best days are ahead. So we're looking forward to having a nice building that we can call our own, and the kids can call their school their own. So, thank you.
Alderman Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Coach, thank you. Ms. Haley, thank you for coming and explaining the program. I just really have a question about the process, because I'm not, I'm not just not familiar with it. When, when a student is, I'll just say expelled, or for whatever reason, doesn't go to the traditional school, how do they, what is the enrollment process for the academy? How are they referred to you? And, and how do they learn about it? And are they mandated by some authority to come? Or is it voluntary? I'm just curious. I never.
So, so every, on Tuesdays, we have, we meet with other administrators. And they'll say, hey, we had Suzie, she kicked out of school for pulling the fire alarm. They'll go over her, whatever she's done, and how her grades are. And some will say, we have other alternative schools. And they might say Suzie's requesting to go to alternative school. Her parent thinks it's a good place for her, nice sized classes. We can accept or reject. Or they get kicked out of an alternative school. That, that leaves us the only option. Or we had, we've had athletes who's had a hard time being eligible and doing the right thing. And they say, you know what? I sent them over to Mr. Allen and Mr. Betts. Get them, get them on par, and they go back to playing sports. Or we had a girl who was pregnant and didn't want to be around other people. So her mom said, you know, I sent them over to Mr. Allen and Mr. Betts, and she'll be in a smaller environment where she'll be comfortable. So they can request. When they request, they have to drop from their school, and then it has to be approved by the district, and then they come to our school. So.
Alderman Turner?
So let, let me begin by saying that you guys are doing a great job. I, I have great respect for the NAACP and all the work that you guys do throughout the community. However, my concern is about the process. And I think you hit it, the nail on the head tree. So when you started off by saying that you want people to judge applications with fairness and justice. And I think that that's very, that's very important, no matter who the applicant is. People want to know that the process was fair, and everybody had equal access to being approved through the process. So I have, I know this has been a, something that has been the topic of conversation throughout the community for a very, very, very long time. I, I think that some of that was, I don't know, but it, it's just a lot, been a lot of conversation about it. And, and I've been getting a barrage of phone calls regarding the ordinance, and most of them are from people who have applied for either TIF or CDBG funds and been denied under remarkably similar circumstances that we're being asked to approve. And so I attended the Economic Development Meeting by Zoom, and there were questions that were asked about the application. And I don't think we ever, or at least I never really got an answer. And I know I talked to, I had a conversation with the mayor about the application, too. So the application, and I talked to Val about the, I talked to Val about it a couple of times, just trying to get some answers and understand. So the application was submitted in the name of Visions 1908. However, as it was explained during the EDC meeting, that entity has no assets, and so the financial information that's required on the, for the application was submitted in the name of the NAACP, but the NAACP has no financial interest or standing in the building. So that's, I'm just having a hard time processing, processing that. And so then when I ask Val if that had ever occurred before, or if we'd ever had a situation where an application like that was approved, I was told no. So that's, I'm just having, I'm just not understand. And then that's one of the things that other applicants are really concerned about. So then the other thing is, there was no, you know, like scope of work to be completed with the project. So we have nothing to associate the funding request with the work to be completed.
Can I speak?
Yeah, sure.
So the work, the scope of work was submitted, but it was not submitted in the correct form. What we were told through the bank and through Val is that we had to submit a list of items that needed to be repaired in the building. And we based that amount of money on the bids that were received from people coming out and walking through the building and giving us bids, and also on prior bids for the other two individuals and organizations that were looking at purchasing the building, because it was within the last 30 to 60 days, and we were told that was acceptable. I don't want the Visions 1908 or the NAACP to be judged or put on trial because someone else was denied. We are a standalone organization.
I understand that, but it's about, nobody's judging, I'm not judging any organization. I'm calling into question the process. I just want to know about the process. So Val told you that there didn't have to be a public bidding process, that you could just have people come in and?
No, Val did not tell us that.
Okay.
What Val told us, initially, we were applying for TIF funds. And we were told that the NAACP would have to own the building in order to apply for TIF funds under the NAACP. So I called our national office as we were completing the application, and was told that the NAACP locally could not own property. It would be National's property. And if they decided to liquidate, that they could take our property. Now, the NAACP, we know, was started because of the race riots here in Springfield. Why would we raise money? And we begged and asked people to help us get a building. I know I have, for the last 25 years, and being the president for the last 10 years, and no one has helped us. So we've learned to help ourselves. We purchased the building. We have a bank account under Visions 1908. However, that bank account was only in existence for a few months. We could not do anything in terms of raising funds for Visions 1908 until the Interior Secretary came from Washington DC and deemed it a historical site, because Visions 1908 was originally created. So we could start raising funds for the 1908 Race Riot Monument. And while waiting for that, we received a call saying this building was available, that we initially tried for five years ago. And then we tried again in three years. Then we tried again, and the other people's loans fell through. And our loan was approved with Visions 1908 and the amount of money that we had sitting in that account, and my personal account, and my personal W-2 to insure the loan. So Visions 1908 is strong. We're well. We're legit. And we're doing everything the right way. So I don't really understand what the problem and the concern is. The building has been purchased. That's one of the requirements we were told. For CDBG funds, for TIF funds, you have to own the property. So the property was closed before your last meeting last week, and it's, it's, it's been closed.
So, okay, so I'm still having a, I'm still not understanding how, I'm still not understanding how the Office of Economic Development is in a, is in a position to approve funding for three, for three different, the, three different entities involved, involved in this one project, and, and, and the financials are, I mean, am I?
Alderman Redpath.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, go ahead, Redpath. Who owns the building?
Visions 1908 and my.
And who is that?
Visions 1908 is members of the NAACP.
And who is that?
I can tell you the members of our board consist of myself, Austin Randolph, my first vice president, Bob Moore, Teresa Clay, Kathy Davis.
So there's individuals that own the building, then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we have all invested money into the building and the closing and putting our down payment.
Okay. And so, but to, but to be in compliance with the application, the city accepted the financials from the NAACP, which, who does it?
We did not use the financials from the NAACP.
That's what it says on the.
Once we were told that we could not get the TIF funds.
Hold on, hold on. That's what is, that's what's on the EDC application. It says, it says financial information, past three years' financials, NAACP.
That was initially for the TIF funds. But once we were told that we could not get the TIF funds because the NAACP could not own property, we resubmitted the information with Visions 1908.
Okay. So, so Val, help me understand. So for CDBG funds, you don't have to submit that, no financial information has to be submitted?
Okay, yes, it does. But they didn't have financials. So what we had to do in, for our office, is, and to clarify that the reason we did not submit on TIF is because we were taking a property that's paying taxes and would be taking it off the tax roll. So we made the decision internally that the TIF was not a good use of funds for, for this particular project. So then we went to looking at CDBG. What I did was work with the bank. So the bank, I talked to the bank, oh, gosh. A lot. I talked to the bank a lot. And they didn't have, because they hadn't, again, this is because it's happened over a process of many weeks, they did not have financials for Visions 1908, because they just started it when they went through the process, correct, of buying the building, right?
And getting approved by the Interior Secretary.
Right. So they did all that. So that's why, when we looked at it, we looked at the financials, and we talked to the bank about how they could, how they were going to be able to use those funds. Now, I'm just going to tell you on CDBG, and I'm going to ask Joey to come up here for just a second. CDBG is very, very different than when we were, when we were asking for funding. So a lot of times on our CDBG projects, we might fund 80% of a project, you know, because again, the most important thing is that we benefit low to moderate income individuals. Okay? This particular project, and I've said this to Teresa many, many, many times, we put the cart before the horse.
And, 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 hold on a second. And that's, and I guess that's the problem that, that's the problem I'm struggling with, is because the, the process to me seems to be upended.
And, and that's correct.
And that's, and that's the pushback that I'm getting from a number of different businesses and organizations throughout this community, is that they have been, they have not had that same opportunity to have the process be upended. So do we know, I mean, do we know the scope, do we know the scope of work?
I just met this mor, I, I told Teresa she had to have an architect. Okay? That was, you know, no questions. We need an architect. So we did talk to them this morning.
Okay, so hold on. I need to go see the doctor.
Sure. Yeah, I know you do.
So, yeah. So has the architect been through the building, and he has presented a scope of work?
He gave, I, I just got it a few minutes ago, right? You just handed it to me.
So the architect has walked through the building, and he's given the scope of work? Yes or no?
No.
Come on. Okay. So then, so, so without the scope of work, then we don't have the public bidding process so that we have this information?
That's correct.
So that's, so when we talk about the fairness and justice part, I have constituents and people that are just hammering me to death about this. So that's why I'm asking the questions.
Absolutely. I would expect you to. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath, do you have a question? Well, I think there's just too many unanswered questions. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we hold this in committee.
I'll second, second.
Yeah, second for that. All in favor to hold? Aye.
Aye.
Be held in committee. Uh, we lost our city, we lost our clerk, so. That's all right. All right, we're at 2020-439. Yes, please.
Resolution referring a petition to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing and consideration proposing amendment to Chapter 155, Section 155.496 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to adult-use cannabis transport, transporting organizations modifying separation provisions.
Is there a motion? Motion for debate. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We got a motion, a second for debate and discussion. Alderman, hand over.
My understanding on this, and Alderman Turner can explain it more, but this, this is, am I wrong? This is to get it in line with the, we, when, when we initially made changes to the, just to the grow operations. This is stringent to where they can grow, but they can't transport away from it. So we, that, am I, am I correct on that?
Go ahead. Alderman Turner?
You're absolutely right. And when we went through, when Alderman Conley and I introduced the ordinance at the very beginning about recreational cannabis, we all knew that there would be times where we would have to come back and make some modifications. And this is one of those times. And what we're doing is in line with, with state law, so we're not going outside of that boundary. And it'll be the same process that we have with any other cannabis operation. This, we will send this to zoning, and then zoning will approve it, and then it will become, then it will come back to us to vote on. And anytime someone has an entity that they want to start, it'll be the same process. It'll come to us for us to send it to zoning, and then zoning send it back to us. And that will happen at each and every one.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Repose. Motion carries for debate.
2020-440, an ordinance authorizing execution of a tentative collective bargaining agreement with extension with the internal Brotherhood of Teamsters, Chauffeurs, Warehousemen, and Helpers of America, Local 916.
Move or consent?
Second.
A motion, a second for consent, any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for consent.
2020, 441, an ordinance increase the number of Class D local licenses by one for Neiman Foods Incorporated Doing Businesses Harvest Market, number 581, located at 3001 Wall Mash Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second.
Yeah, motion, a second for consent, Director Yezel.
My night, I guess.
Yeah.
Mike Fritz is here from Harvest Market, and he did just bring it to my attention that the address should be 3001 Veterans Parkway. And if you have any questions of him, we're really excited they're going to open November 11th, hopefully, so.
I'll make a motion, we amend it to say 3001 Veterans Parkway.
Second.
There we go, motions or amendment for a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Noted.
Move the motion as amended to consent.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second for consent, any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed, motion carries for consent as amended with one present vote.
And noted.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
On the next one, I had asked if we hold it in committee?
Very good.
Comcast.
Any discussion on that? Do we need a bucket?
Discussion on that one.
Sure, go ahead, Alderman, go ahead.
And this may be what Alderman Hanauer has in mind is, I think, a community-wide interest in this franchise agreement and to shorten the term of years to something less than 10 years so that we can hold their feet to the fire, Comcast. And so Corporation Council, who has negotiated this contract and who would know what flexibility the city has to shorten the term of years of the contract from 10 down, let's say, to five years?
I believe that there could be. We've actually, I do appreciate actually Alderman Hanauer recommending holding it for further look because we've actually got some additional language that we're talking about the service issues. We are, you may recall just very briefly, that the city's ability to actually regulate cable operation is very limited because of federal law preemptions. There are, however, some areas where the city does have some ability to impact service questions. An example came up, Alderman, you may recall that you had asked, I think it was, was it Oak Park Sixth Edition?
Right.
And I just got an email that actually this afternoon saying they were proceeding with it next week, but it's taken some time to.
Isn't that amazing what contract will do, do for speeding up that?
So, in answer to your question, I believe it is possible to do a lesser term, and we could certainly have that discussion, but the, these things, we have very limited authority because of federal law. It used to be when Alderman Redpath was first on the city council, the council actually voted on rates, determined all of those things. However, the federal government preempted that by federal law, took away all rate ability to control rates. They've really restricted the ability to require certain service. However, we are looking at our ability to adopt an ordinance or to otherwise try to set certain minimum service standards. So we are looking at that based on, in part, the discussion that was taken, you know, taken place about a month ago.
To complete my questions then on this one, Mr. Chair, that was my first question, which was, had to do, you know, what authority do we have to shorten the term of years? I also note, is it okay to continue, Mr. Chair?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
There's no fiscal impact on our fact sheet, so we, we need to know exactly what kind of fiscal impact we have here. And there's no copy of the franchise agreement. So I, I think this is an example where the staff work is not properly prepared to present an ordinance to the city council for, for review. I think we want to examine wherever the city has any allowance for participation in the terms of the contract, we want to be able to know what those areas are where we do have some flexibility, where we have, have not been preempted by the federal government to have some exercise of control. And I think we've all got situations where Comcast has been unresponsive to our constituents. I don't like to bring up specific cases, but I will because this is the time to talk about it. You know, I've got one constituent where Comcast has left cable circling down into her bushes and it's been that way for a couple of months. And Comcast says, well, eventually we're going to take care of it. And that's an inadequate answer, it's unacceptable. And to the extent we've got muscle, where we can exercise muscle against Comcast to be responsive to our constituents, we want to be able to do it. So I think this is worthy of good legal review, and if you need special counsel, Corporation Counsel, who has, has an expertise in utility regulation, in cable regulation, and, and the different allowances municipalities have to, to exercise some kind of control, let's go for it. Let's really dig into this because this is our opportunity. Once we pass this, our hands are tied.
I'm just curious, did anybody from Comcast come to this meeting? Is anybody from Comcast here? No, okay. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, real quick, first of all, I appreciate finding out that, that they are going to work on that. I've had numerous calls regarding, I did hear from Comcast after the last meeting, I did bring it up. So the other part I would like to say is when Alderman Redpath did that, we had black and white TVs and three channels, so.
Ooh, Chuck. Right. No remote control, Chuck.
I think Alderman Redpath needs to respond to that.
Well, I, I concur with Alderman McMinim and Alderman Hanauer because the, other than snow removal, the number one problem I have in my ward is cable TV. I get, I get dozens of calls on it all the time. It goes in and out, the service is terrible. And you talk about wire wrapped up, I built my house 12 years ago, it's still wrapped up from when I built it, so.
Let's get Rob in.
I agree, we need to shorten the contract, we needed, we, we need to use some muscle if we can. And I can still take you in basketball, Ralph.
Oh, oh.
Can you respond to that, Ralph, Frank?
No, that's all right.
Oh.
I went to Lambeau, man, we're basketball.
All right, well, we're going to hold that in committee, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay, it is held.
2020, 443, an ordinance authorizing settlement of workers' compensation claims for Gregory Boyle, an officer of Public Works employee, for case number 20-WC-16932 and 20-WC-16937.
Move for consent.
Second.
A motion, a second for consent, any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries for consent.
2020, 445, an ordinance approving appointment of Robert C. Emel to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission.
For debate?
Second.
A motion, second for debate, any discussion? Are they here? Like the, no. All right, and, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for debate.
2020, 446, an ordinance approving the appointment of Adrian Hood to the Springfield Convention and Visitors Advisory Board.
Move for debate.
Second.
A motion, second for debate, any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our agenda. I hate to do this to everybody, but we do have an out-of-town presenter who cannot be here next week, so the chief needs to talk about ShotSpotter. So chief?
ShotSpotter.
ShotSpotter, sorry, it's been a long night.
Chief, chief lives in town, right? Don't we have a residency?
Yeah, well, I think they're, they're vendors from Minnesota, I think, so they're here for the night, so.
Good evening, thank you. They're coming in, they're just, they are from out of town and they did travel to assist us putting this program together as well as this presentation. I'll try to be as quick as possible for you folks, and they'll just be here for any questions that maybe I cannot answer. We'll start by the very first slide by talking about ShotSpotter. This is the coverage area that we agreed to, which is 4.25 square miles. We've been a customer of ShotSpotter since May 7, 2020. We have two sections, what we call the North Session, which is 3.58 square miles, and then the South Session, which is 6.7. You can tell by the squares there on the map. The next page is just simply the facilities that are located in this area. Obviously, there's a mix of hospitals, schools, churches, police, government, parks, et cetera. Key findings so far from the ShotSpotter program, again, we're in our infancy here, we're only five months into it. We've had 654 ShotSpotter alerts. 619 of those do not have matching calls for service. What does that mean? That means we're getting called about 5.4% of the time from our community. When we expand that, I should go back, that 5.4% of time means we get the calls within three minutes of the ShotSpotter alert and within 300 feet of where the alert actually came from. When we expand those boundaries to one mile in 15 minutes, we get 7.5%. What does that mean to me? It means that obviously that in, we need to do more community engagement, we need to do more community outreach in those areas because we're just not getting the calls for service. And while the data is good, it points us to where the shots came from, and while it provides information and data for us to respond as well as investigatory leads, et cetera, it can't tell me who shot the gun. It can't tell me a description of the suspects, it can't tell me a description of the vehicle. And initially, when we started this program, we had plans to do some community engagement, some outreach in those areas, but due to COVID, we were not allowed to do that. So again, at some point in time, if we can get ahead of this COVID game, we're going to go out and do some of that. But also try to do some, through some other ways is what we're looking at now to try to get it out there. While I was alarmed by the numbers here, I'm told about the 128, 120 ShotSpotter customers, we're in line with the national norms. That's what they find in most of their cities initially. So again, you know, it's, it's not that the people out there don't call all the time, sometimes they call and it's just further away, and we'll have some data showing that here. People think that calls and shots fired come from a certain location, but due to environmental factors, et cetera, they bounce, et cetera, and we'll see that, and I'll show you some examples later on. This slide here, basically what it's saying is that 93% of the time, we are alerted by ShotSpotter within 90 seconds, I'm sorry, 60 seconds and within 25-meter radius. Next, we'll look at some of the maps analysis. What you see here is the ShotSpotter alerts, 654 in our contracted coverage area. Again, this is from May 7 through October 21st. These are the actual calls for service we got from citizens. Again, you can see the dra, the drastic difference. Something to show here, the green on the outside, that's our 100-meter buffer area that they give us for free to make sure that we get the calls within our contracted areas. The other thing this slide shows is that in that bottom section, there's absolutely no calls for service. No citizens are calling us.
Where is that located?
I don't want to get the exact locations, but it's in our Quad Four area.
Okay.
Additionally, now you see where the ShotSpotter alerts are at. There's a combination of the two, just showing the calls for service as well as the alerts that we're getting. This is nothing more than a heat map, showing us where the density is in the areas, just another way to look at it. The types of calls for service we are getting, when we talk about the shooters, we talked about the officer safety aspect of ShotSpotter, what it would bring to us. We've had one full automatic weapon, we've had six high-capacity weapon alerts, and 15 alerts that involve multiple shooters. And here's an example of each of those in order. You can hear the car in the background where they're driving and shooting. That's two cars shooting at each other.
That's great.
HotSpotter shot, HotSpot in time of day? Whoa, go back. Every six hours, someone shoots a gun approximately three times in one of our located areas. That's four incidents per day for a total of 13 shots per day on average. I find this to be one of the most interesting slides that we have here. This shows you that 69% of all shots fired incidents occurred between 7:00 PM and 4:00 AM. Additionally, if you break it down further, 56% of those shots fired calls occur on Saturdays, Sundays, and Tuesdays. Additionally, if you break it down even further, you'll see between 9:00 and 3:00 on those dates, that's 52% of our calls for service. Why is this valuable? This helps us with resource deployment, this helps us to know that if we have extra bodies, where we need to put them at, when we need to put them out there. This is gun fire by month. You'll see here that May was a partial month, you'll see June, which is always our highest month, typically the year of June and July. Those are the highest months. You see August, we came down a little bit, September, we had a little bit of spike, October, we seem to be down. This is concerning, but however, you know, we are constant contact with our comparable cities and throughout the state as well as out the Midwest. And we talk about gunshots, and we've all can say, anecdotally speaking, that every department I've talked to, shots fired are up, shootings are up, homicides are up. And a lot of we think it's anecdotally speaking tied to the COVID and people being locked down at home, the increase in domestic violence, the increase just in violence as a whole that we're seeing across the nation as well as in our own department. So again, while we obviously see the spikes here, we're seeing that anyway, and I think that if we didn't have ShotSpotter, we would still saw those spikes, we just wouldn't have known all of the information as well as, you know, the detailed locations of where those incidents were occurring. Location, distance averages, this is what we kind of talked about earlier. When people hear a shot, they call and where they think it came from. As you can see in this incident here, the caller called 59 seconds after the alert came in and was 164 feet from where she called thinking it was from. Again, you can hear the car, and so we know they're driving down that road at the time they shoot. This one here, there's two callers, you can't see the dot of the shot because it's under the top of a phone emblem. This one here, one called, was a minute and 26 seconds after the shots were fired, 108 feet from where the shot actually occurred. But the other one called it in at the same time, I should say, within 13 minutes, from 3,346 feet away, thinking it was outside of her residence. That's how sound travels. The next one, the caller called in within 35 seconds. The shot was 488 feet, as you can see, she thinks it's up by her house where the phone's at, you see where the actual shot's fired from. When we get called by a citizen, we're checking where they tell us it's coming from. You can see, they're not always accurate. This one here, again, my old eyes can't read how far away that one was there, so I think it says 39 feet, right on top of you. Right in front of our house. Those are just some examples that what we talked about when sound balances and how the environmental factors can affect how sound travels, and then you wonder how you might miss something, not find evidence, et cetera. How come, you know, people think that, well, why don't you find all the evidence? This is exactly why, and that's the advantage of ShotSpotter and how it's helped us. Some of the success stories is just a quick summary. March 2020, again, let me tell you, March 2020, we weren't even a customer yet. They were here, we had signed the paperwork, they were doing the install, we had a homicide over the 2200 block of Spur Street. Detective, just on a whim, called ShotSpotter and said, hey, would you happen to pick anything up by chance? They did. And what they did is they basically were to pinpoint the exact location where the shooting occurred from, the exact time it occurred, and this proved to be very crucial for detectives when we were putting together a timeline and investigating this call. Ultimately, this information helped us get a warrant for the arrest of a suspect. Part of the reason we can go back and get that information is because ShotSpotter, once it detects a shot, never gets rid of it. May 2020, officers heard gunshots near their location, they observed two vehicles shooting at each other, officers chased the vehicles for an extended period of time, and eventually were able to arrest the suspects and recover a firearm. The ShotSpotter system indicated evidence would be located at two different locations that we normally would not have checked if not directed to do so by the system. And the reason being is the cars were fleeing, they were still shooting at each other, we would not have known where to go to find that information. May 2020, officers heard gunshots nearby, and the ShotSpotter system gave an alert of a precise location. Officers did not observe anyone outside, however, they looked through the window, they indicated address. Through the window, they could see the suspect take the gun out of his waistband and place it in the drawer. Officers made contact with the suspect who confessed to firing the shots, and the gun was recovered. Again, without the precise location being provided by the system, we would have never solved that crime. Evidence collection, June 2020, officers responded to a large party at a park where multiple ShotSpotter alerts were aired. Officers were initially unable to locate any evidence, however, when using the ShotSpotter technology, they were able to locate the exact scene of the shooting and nine spent shell casings. Without the system, the scene and evidence would probably never have been found due to the lack of daylight and this being in the middle of the early morning hours. July 2020, ShotSpotter system alerted to several incidents of gunfire within a small area. It allowed officers to determine the suspect was mobile, possibly firing It allowed officers to determine the suspect was mobile, possibly firing out of a moving vehicle. Officers eventually located the suspect vehicle, which refused to stop for them. The suspect jumped out of the vehicle while carrying the firearm and while the vehicle was still moving. Officers chased down the suspect on foot and were able to arrest him and recover the firearm. Without the system, again, officers may not have known the suspect was in a vehicle or it was mobile. August 2020. Officers received a ShotSpotter alert near the location of 17 shots. Officers were able to locate the exact location, observed two subjects running away. The suspects were apprehended, the firearm was recovered. Without the system, our response time would not have been quick enough to locate the suspects. August 2020, ShotSpotter system alerted multiple times within a short timeframe to three different locations. Based on this information, officers were able to determine the suspect was mobile and traveling northbound. Officers were able to locate the suspect who had exited his vehicle and fled on foot. The suspect was armed with a handgun and taken to custody after pointing the weapon at the officer. September of 2020. Officers responded to a residence for a ShotSpotter alert, 12 shots fired. There were no callers, no witnesses located. However, because of the system's technology, officers located the exact scene of the shots in the backyard, recovered seven shell casings. Normally, the lack of daylight and information would not have allowed officers to locate any evidence. The cost of gun violence in our community. In calendar year 2019, we had nine homicides. That cost our city approximately $11,478,312. As you can see the breakdown on the table there, that covers the cost of a crime scene, investigation, hospitalization, criminal justice, incarceration, victim support and lost revenue. What I'd like to add to this obviously is that we believe ShotSpotter is a valuable tool for our community. While we're still in the infancy stage of the program and still learning how to work out our processes and use the data to its full capabilities, we are impressed with what we've seen so far. ShotSpotter is a critical part of our gun violence reduction program. When you accompany that with our focused deterrence program, our NiVAN machine, as well as our movement toward predictive analytics, I'm confident we'll be able to reduce gun violence in our community. We use this data to decide how to deploy resources, while also having extra patrols in certain areas to have the greatest impact at the right times. The data provided can be used to assist in investigation by providing investigatory leads and corroborate witness statements. This is another step toward real-time crime fighting. It's what predictive analytics is all about. And this is where we're trying to get to as a department in effort to make our community safer and reduce crime. ShotSpotter has directly helped us recover 17 crime guns and 736 casings since May 7th. We have confirmed 110 shots fired calls and entered all those casings into NiVAN. Out of those 110 incidents, we've been able to link those same guns to 150 other crimes in our community. Again, we're still in the early stages in the infancy of learning how to deploy this information, how to gather the information, use it to its full extent. But we've been impressed with what we have so far. I would like to thank the council for their dedication in keeping our community safe and providing this valuable tool to us as we move forward. At this time, I'll open up for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chief. Alderman Turner.
I want to thank you for bringing the report. I was always a fan of ShotSpotter and a supporter. And I think that the information that you've provided tonight tells us that we did the right thing by approving the purchase. So thanks for the report.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? Alderman Connolly.
Sorry, I don't want to get Alderman Vos too annoyed with me for talking again, but...
I'm sorry.
He said you could always hear me. No, chief, I just want to tell you, I was, I guess fortunate, but when I was on a ride along with my NPO officer Leach, he got reports of the shots being fired. Even by the time we got to the site, there were already other officers there. Can tell there certainly is a fast response. And I appreciate that you're using this data to drive your decision-making and look forward to getting more updates on this. But thank you again for implementing this.
And again, I just want to reiterate, I support our community, our community supports us, I know that. Sometimes we just get complacent. We're not sure that's what we heard and we don't always report it. Sometimes we don't report it in a timely fashion. We wait, you know, too long because we're waffling whether or not it is something or it's not something. This helps us, you know, shines a light onto what the true problem is out there. But again, we got a little more work to do as far as that community engagement part. You know, also while trying to make sure we refine our processes so we're getting the most accurate information as quickly as possible. One thing right now is we're still self-reporting and self-dispatching. The alerts are going directly to the officer's mobile data terminals in their car, their NBCs, as well as to their phones, et cetera. So we don't have that time delay waiting for somebody to call dispatch and dispatch to put that call out. So it is a quicker response. I'd love to sit up here and say that we recovered 600 guns, you know, but unfortunately, that's not it. But every gun taken off the street is an opportunity for a life saved. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Chief, would you quickly introduce your out-of-town guests?
Absolutely. Kevin, come on up. Jeff, come on up. These two men are, as I call, our success planners and our helpers for every little thing that we need. We call upon them when we need assistance and they've been very receptive in helping us. They were helping us today as far as looking at trying to get some data out of the system quicker than what we are and how we can use that to help deploy our resources. So truly appreciate them in that effort there. So at this time, Jeff?
Good evening. My name is Jeff McGee. I've been employed with ShotSpotter for about three years. I'm assigned to the Springfield Police Department along with my cohort Kevin. My background, I was a special agent with ATF for about 25 years. So I've used this technology at the federal and the state level. So as of right now, we use the technology for four different things. It's kind of how I look at Springfield. I also have been assigned to the Chicago Police Department for the last three years. I also have Boston, all of Connecticut, I have Memphis and Detroit. So I got some rough cities. So my job is to make sure we deploy, we just don't drop the technology off. We work with the police department and your council here to make sure we use the product from a holistic approach. But just think about four things. Number one is the technology protects the community. So the community, again, the police response to the community, what we've seen is, if you understand AR-15, AR-15, because a cloud level could be six blocks away. So it gets them there a lot quicker. Second thing is it protects the police officers when they respond. No matter what we believe, police officers do respond. But again, the unknown, are you responding to an address or not to that location? The perception is that you don't care. So it's putting them to the dot, it's telling you how many rounds, if it's multiple shooters and the area within that 25 meters. Second, the third thing I talk about is saving victims their lives. So they're still in the early stage to talk about when, if a victim is saved because of time, but over, if you get there a lot quicker, the national average is seven to 10 minutes. They're getting there a lot quicker. We're getting information to them within under 60 seconds so they can respond if there's a victim, to take them to the hospital a lot quicker. They're still using NiVAN. I worked with ATF very close. I used to be a special agent in charge in Chicago. So this area here, I used to run this area. So I'm very close with the ATF counterparts. So they have a team, that's an agent assigned to the police department. They work NiVAN. They're collecting, fourth thing is they're collecting casings and along with firearms to put them in a NiVAN to do links. So the biggest piece is the community outreach piece, and he talked about that, right? If you're not calling the police, you can't continue to build that relationship with the community. So that's one of the things we do. There's more to come. It's in the early stage, but we're going to continue working and assign to your department and here with the city to make sure he's successful and the department's successful. So just my background, I'll let Kevin talk a little bit.
Good evening, the honor, members of the Springfield City Council. My name is Kevin Johnson. As of May this year, I was a deputy chief with the Chicago Police Department. I served 30 years with the Chicago Police Department. I worked in community policing. I ran our training academy and also worked as a commander in one of the most high crime districts in Chicago, the 11th district on the west side of Chicago. That district is plagued with drugs, gang violence and shootings. ShotSpotter came in and they were able to reduce crime working with our officers. We reduced crime in that district 33%. And at the same time, we were able to engage in community outreach to the community. Whereas officers started, the community started to see that officers responding to ShotSpotter alerts, even if someone was not shot. We told our officers to get out of the car. If they get the shell casings, if you don't get the shell casings, introduce yourself to somebody who's out there. So the community knows who's out there shooting. Sometimes they want to see what the police are going to do about it. And that's what we saw in Chicago. We increased our community engagement. We worked with our technology and it's a great program. I believe in it. I strongly believe in it. Now, my commitment to working with ShotSpotter is to go out and help other cities do the same thing we did in Chicago, to address gun violence and make our community safer. Thank you very much, and I'm really looking forward to working with the Springfield Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you much. Appreciate it. All right. And Fish Business, Alderman DeSenzo.
Yes, I'm, thank you, Chair. I'm going to bring up the obvious. Salmon County hit 8% positivity rate today. Two more days of that means we are facing additional mitigations. That's huge. As of today, seven out of the 11 regions of the state of Illinois are under additional mitigations. We're obviously going in the wrong direction. At one point this evening, there were approximately 50 people in this room. If we face additional mitigations, it's going to be 25 people or less in this room. So I think we need to be thinking about that. This time next week or next Wednesday, we might be in a totally different situation. So I just want to make everyone aware of it, if they weren't already. I think they are. Numbers are on the rise. We had an all-time daily high on Sunday. I feel like I've been banging on this drum for months now. And we're going in the wrong direction as a state, as a region, as a city. So let's try to get it under control.
Anybody else? All right, new business?
I think we have a report from Public Works on the railroad properties, mowing, right? I asked for it last week. Hi, Darryl.
Hi.
I couldn't recognize you with the mask on.
Good evening, everyone.
He's acting in his role as a...
Always good to see everyone. We did talk about, I actually had a, we took a twofold approach. One of the actual contracting season, some for the grass cutting stuff is starting to end. But I know one of two concerns and stuff has been the railroad properties. And like I said before, I think we're in a better situation than we had been in the past. And I did take the time to do a nice little tour with Tim Griffin to look at some of the properties that we talked about. And I know Mr. Vos and stuff is very passionate about these railroad proper, all properties regarded as far as the grass height and things of that nature. So we did take a tour of those particular areas. And what we decided to do was right towards the end of the program is have our own teams and stuff that we have out there with the community component actually address some of those areas that you're talking about with more weed whacking. Basically, bound to pretty much the issue of the weeds and stuff, growth and stuff between the fence lines and stuff that has been installed and stuff by Union Pacific Properties specifically. So what we've done is basically have now assessed our teams and stuff to go throughout those properties to actually do some weed whacking. Now, the issue and stuff we do still have is that we cannot have our particular community teams go onto the properties of Union Pacific or any other warehouses and stuff without their permission. So what we're doing is basically going on our side of stuff in those properties and trying to get as long as far as we can to take care of those growth within those fence line areas and make the city, not only to beautify the city, but also this is a time that we can see better as far as the climate. The good thing about this, y'all, is going into dormant stage. So we won't be resting with this situation within a month or so.
I was going to tell you, pray for snow.
We're ready for that too. Public Works is always ready.
Thank you for your, thank you for your attention to it. Alderman, I mean, former Alderman Vos is pretty passionate about it.
Yeah, he's a good man.
And he's a good man. He just wants the city clean and as we all do. So that's why we bring it up on occasion. So thank you.
No problem.
Alderman DeSenzo?
As long as you're up there.
Yes.
The Midway Liquors Building on South Grand that you promised me would be down in August.
What I promised you is that we would take it to the courts and the courts did yield an action and stuff that was fable to the city. So what we're doing right now, we're in that process now to have that building prepared and stuff for demolition. So promise made, promise will be kept.
We still have homeless there. We have tents camped out there. And I've also alerted Officer Jones to that. But it isn't, it's an ongoing problem in that area. Lots of trash unmoed. It's an eyesore. Everyone is familiar with that building.
Ask Chief Reine to come up and clarify something because I asked him, I think Dr. Miller, I think he was on the radio explaining the positive testing rate. And so I posed the question to Chief Reine with regards to test. You see, expressed that people might test positive and then they go back to see if they're negative and they test positive again. And I don't think the explanation China had, the county's not counting that, but the Illinois Department of Public Health may be counting that second positivity rate.
Yeah, that is the difference between, so a lot of people have asked me over the last few months about why the percentage for the state is higher than the percentage for the county. And that's absolutely the reason is because when they test, if they test a nursing home or something like that and people continue to test positive, then it will show each individual time. That is correct. But that being said, the entire state is counted that way. So it is a comparison, when you're comparing Saglin County to Morgan County, they're both counted that way by the state. Now, Morgan County may also keep track of their own personal positive. I'm sure they do.
But it's my understanding for the 8% or whatever the positivity rate would be, I would, I was always under the impression that it'd be individuals. Or 8% of individuals tested, not individuals, you know, because I could test positive two times and be counted twice.
Yeah, but you've also been tested twice.
Right.
So it is 8% of the individuals tested. And if, but if the same individual gets tested over and over, then it's true on both sides.
Chief, I attended a meeting yesterday of about 250 bar and restaurant owners at Panther Creek and the topic of discussion was COVID and the possible shutdown. There was some concern and some questions directed at Public Health Director Gail O'Neill about how we are calculating that. In our region, there, there is, well, there's, the information is, are we calculating every county? Or are we calculating, because there's, we were told that there may not be calculating some of the counties that are slower, which would drive our numbers down. So can you tell me that, or can you find out that, are they including all the counties that are in our region? Because if you take Champagne, Decatur and Springfield, they're going to be up because we're major cities. But you've got other counties that are down that should help drive those numbers down.
Well, so our, our region, Region Three does not include Macon County or Champagne County. It actually goes towards Adams County.
Okay.
Adams County is actually the hotspot in our region. There's no doubt.
I was thinking congressional districts, sorry.
You know, it mirrors, it mirrors the, and they've, they've since broken up further, so there's more regions. But it actually mirrored the Department of Public...
Same scenario though. Bigger cities are going to draw bigger numbers and that's what, I'm wondering, can you find...
Generally, that's true.
Okay. And by the way, we, the group we had, we all had masks on.
Thank you.
And we social distanced.
Sounds like a lot of people, I'm just saying. Glad I wasn't there.
And just so you know, they did, when they got there, they spread everybody out.
That's good.
So we...
You know, I said it last week, I don't want to beat a dead horse. But there is no doubt that the biggest source of spreading are people that are, that know each other that are too comfortable.
Right.
People showing up backyard barbecues and things like that. If you don't know each other, generally people are staying away from each other. And that's been my own personal experience. I must just go out early though, because I read the complaints and I got one from Alderman McMenamin today. And I literally had checked that place.
From a constituent.
I understand, yeah, I should clarify that, that he forwarded on to me. And, you know, that was a place that I checked with my own eyes earlier on that day, but it was at 6:30, so it must have looked different at 11 o'clock.
And just so you know, I know all of us do this. We, when we go to places, I've been, you try to gauge what's, what's going on, how people are reacting to this. And the major, the strong majority of people are complying with the restrictions that we're putting on them. They're wearing their masks and they're, and they're social distancing. And there is, there's the violators that are not going to, not, the bad rule followers just aren't going to do it.
Extremely hard to control individual behavior.
It is, but there's, there's a strong advocacy out there pushing the safety so we can, so we can keep our numbers down because we don't want to shut down any businesses.
Right, and that's, that's the, you know, obviously the mayor, and I've had this conversation, I won't put words in his mouth, but that's, that's our concern. And that's our, why we, from day one, we want to work with business owners, but we got to make the community understand that you have to do your part too, or it's going to hurt all of us. that you have to do your part too, or it's going to hurt all of us.
Anybody else? Nope. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. You know, a few people wanting to speak. James Johnson?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Just one more new business.
What's that?
One more new business.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to remind people, I, I put my special mask on tonight. Obviously, we're not meeting next Tuesday. I hope everyone's, everyone has a plan, everyone gets out and votes, so.
I thought you were drinking VO on the top there.
I am, yeah. I know I do that at home though, not at, not at council.
Hey, go ahead, Mayor, is James that's up here?
Yeah, tomorrow's Facebook Live. It's an interesting one. We get to flip the mic, so to speak. The three individuals from the media covering the city council will be on Facebook Live, so to cover how COVID pandemics impacted, how they cover the news and things of that nature. So be sure to submit your questions, and now's your chance to ask the media questions you're wanting to ask.
Mm-hmm. I got you. I couldn't miss you.
Good evening, all the women, men, chair, proctor, mayor. I'm coming on behalf, Missy. I'm coming on behalf. Look, this is why I came.
Go Steelers, go.
Yeah. That's why I looked at you.
Did you have to wear that Patriots stuff?
I did, because Missy. So last week, we had a young man come up and address the landlord issue and situation. And I wasn't going to run down here then, but I thought I would have come and speak now, and, and I, I might be seeking answers, Mayor. And I'm going to comment on, like, let me commend you guys on the homeless situation for the hard work, and it's going to get harder because it's, it's going to increase. If you look at some of the states that don't have the protection of renters, it's a big deal. And so I'm foreseeing an issue growing. I pray it doesn't, but I'm just going to be real. So WINE's Department, Community Relations, and the board. Now, Mayor, I, maybe I missed it, but I'm, I'm not understanding what's the commission's role and what we should be doing. We haven't had a meeting for over a year until like last week or something. And so a lot of people in the community really don't know how to reach WINE and bring those type of issues or that office. So WINE did share with me today that, I guess you guys came up with some initiatives to start getting the information out. But as commissioners and what was your plan or role and how for, how the number of, I think 10, 12, whatever the number is, to be effective in that commission role to help the community?
Mayor?
Yeah, with regards to that, that's one of the initiatives for the commission. You know, come up with ways for outreach or what have you. And this isn't the only committee that we're taking a look at setting goals and objectives to accomplish throughout the year. So originally, they talked about combining it with another committee, but with the housing initiative coming up, things of that nature, it's probably important to keep it the way it is. But that's one of the annual reports that would be forthcoming, or the goals would be set out with regards to that.
Okay. Well, we look forward to seeing what happens in the future. That's all I have today. See you next month though.
Who calls, who calls the commission, calls your committee together? Who's?
WINE does.
Okay. If you ask him why we haven't had a meeting in a while?
Well, I came and asked this body, how come we didn't have a meeting?
I'm asking you, you're on the committee.
Well, I, I didn't get an answer. I never have got an answer. Well, I guess the mayor kind of just answered it. They were trying to combine a bunch of stuff, or a bunch of committees or something together, but I guess that didn't work out. So now we're back to just having our meetings, and we had our first one. And we're going to go to Zoom meetings, and every other month, we'll try to meet in person. But I think WINE is going to have, that whole, his office in the upcoming months will, will be overwhelmed. I don't know if he can handle the volume of what's going to go on once this virus thing kind of settles down and they release landlords to start evicting people. I think we're going to
You know, James, one of my, one of my concerns that when he came up here was the lack of communication, but how people are not getting, be able to get to him. And I made a recommendation that we use CWLP billing to put notices in there so people could come forward and, and, and talk to him. WINE is going to, WINE is going to do everything he can to try to
He did mention that.
He absolutely will. But if we don't put the two people together, if we don't put them all together, they're not going to be able to get their answers. And, and WINE's got some answers. He's using Lincoln Land Legal Services and, and other agencies to, to help these folks, and we want them. But that, take that back to the committee. That's, that's an idea, and I think, Mayor, that's okay that we use that billing system, isn't it? To put notices in for contact?
Yeah, I think they're working on in December, but I think, I called Woman Turner, brought it up. How do you, and James Johnson can speak to this better than I can, there's individuals with, outside that realm. I mean, you have so many facets of communication, and how do you cast that broad net in many different facets?
But if they got, if they got
That's one aspect of it.
If they live in an apartment, they got to have utilities, they got to have water, they got to have electric. So that's one avenue, Mayor. There's probably a lot of places that we have to look, but they, we got to get that communication going so people can reach out, because we don't want bad landlords. There's a lot more better landlords than there are bad ones, but there are bad ones, and we want to, we want to clip them.
Agree. Alderman Turner?
No, the mayor actually said what I was going to say is that there's, you know, I know, I know Chuck, you mentioned that last, last week about the CWLP bills, and, you know, there's, there's avenues to get information out. However, we have to start thinking outside of the box on how we get information out, and there's all kinds of ways. And so everyone doesn't get a CWLP bill. You know, you may live in an apartment where, you know, those services are provided by landlords. So everybody doesn't get one. And, and, you know, I know when I get my CWLP bill, I, I open it up, I look at what it is, and then, you know, I just lay it down. I don't dig out all those papers and read them.
I read all through it.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do. But everybody doesn't. So, you know, we just have to start thinking about other ways that we, that we reach people. And a lot of people are more, you know, people learn and, and take in information in a lot of different ways, and everyone doesn't take it in by reading things, and so we have to, we have to be more creative in how we get information out.
Alderman here?
Yeah, thank you. I, I know landlords that have told me that they've actually sat down with them, with some of their renters to fill out the federal forms or whatever the forms were to try to get, get reimbursed or get, get their rent paid. You know, one of the concerns, I, I, I am concerned about the, the number of people that, that will get, you know, tossed. But I'm also concerned about landlords losing their houses to the banks or their apartment buildings. And if that happens, then, then the number of decent quality or, or just inventory, I guess it would be, is going to go down, and that may not be great for people that, that are renters and, you know. And, and it's not just, it's, it's throughout Springfield, you know? So I think that one way we could do it is make sure we go, try to get to landlords as much as possible and have them work with their tenants, because they want to get paid.
But Ralph, there's a difference between, there's a difference between a landlord sitting down with the tenant, filling out a form so they can get their rent, and a landlord sitting down with the tenant discussing how they can get their plumbing fixed.
Right.
That's too
I understand that.
You know what I mean? So, so yeah, a landlord is going to be very helpful when they're trying to get paid, but they're not going to be so helpful when a tenant wants something to be, you know, something to be fixed or something to be repaired.
No, I, I understand. I understand. Like Chuck said, we do have bad landlords, but we have a lot of good ones too.
But, and, and sometimes in, in those situations, it may not necessarily be that the landlord is a bad landlord. He just, he, he's just not in communication with, with his tenant. So, you know, he may not be a bad land, bad landlord, he just may not be in communication with the tenant.
And, and all of that is true, and I'm glad you brought that up, and, because there's one side of the tenants, but also we need to protect the landlords or help them, because we have what we call squatters, and they're squatting in their rental houses and they're refusing to pay rent.
Right.
And I had that issue in my neighborhood, and y'all already know how that went. So for the landlords who are trying to do the right thing, we need to make sure we help them too on handling and dealing with these squatters who don't want to get out because, you know, they know they can't be evicted. And then, like you were saying, landlords losing out on his money to pay his bills on his building, so.
You know, and I don't want to belabor this, but I, I brought a situation to Doug Brown's attention, and this is talking about the landlords, that there's certain circumstances, and Mayor, I don't know if Doug Brown talked to you about this because he was going to ask you, but they've got landlords who are on, not on our electric side, they're on Ameren or something, and they're, but they have city water, and they're getting shut off by Ameren because Ameren decided that they're, they're shutting them off now. And so what's happened, what they're worried about is here comes winter, and you're going to, they're still staying in there. Like you said, they're squatters, and they're staying in there, not paying the rent, their, their utilities have been shut up for non-payment, but our water's still there. And so landlords are saying, hey, when this freezes, I'm going to be, I'm going to have some serious problems. So Doug was looking into it, I think he was going to come talk to you, Mayor, about it, and I don't know what our circumstances are on that, but what's going to happen is landlords and, and buildings that they have are going to, are going to have damage if the water starts freezing, so.
And we don't really want that.
No, we don't.
No.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, James.
Thanks, James.
There were a number of people who signed up to speak on the animal control, I'm assuming, yeah, go ahead.
I thought, maybe I'm confused, that happened one time. But were we going to have a report from John Fallon about something tonight? No?
Mr. Mayor?
Next week.
Next week? Okay, that's, somebody said this week. Okay.
Third time's a charm. Probably be next week.
Did you say probably next week or it will be next week?
Yep.
Yep, which one?
It will be next week.
Okay.
All right. Those who signed for animal control, hold those until next week, or did anybody want to stock? He signed up.
Jane McBride? All right. Shelley?
This is Mary. She's the president of
You know, just a matter of protocol, I think if we know that we're going to hold something, we should tell them on the front end so they don't have to sit through the dark.
So we did.
I did.
Oh, we did? Okay.
They, yeah, we, we were.
All right.
So, thank you. My name is Mary. Mary, City Council, looking for my glasses. I appreciate your willingness to hear and consider our concerns. We did come tonight because we've been waiting a long time on this. First, we were asking that you do recognize and acknowledge the need to provide simple basic rights for the animals that are housed at Saglin County Animal Control. Although leadership with public health has consistently been very willing to meet with the board and discuss the opportunities to provide humane care, the gap between audience and action remains mammoth. We talk with no, no assaults whatsoever. It is frustrating to advocate for a change in a system that values politics and perception of human, humane treatment, fairness, and safety. The biggest impediment in trying to save these animals' lives within the shelter is poor management. Every cat or dog that enters that shelter has a 50/50 chance of getting out. If we do not put programs in place, that percentage goes down. For years, we have advocated, and I'm just going to go over, do this quickly, we've advocated for drains to be put into the, or I'm sorry, drains to be put into the drain system as there has been standing water with feces in these. Dogs will jump up and down in this. Now, with any place you house animals, one of the biggest concerns is disease control. House animals, humans, disease control. These drains not having a cover led to an outbreak of parvo. In most shelters and kennels, that's a huge red flag, and you would think the person or the department responsible for running this would want that taken care of immediately. We are a year and a half past that, and we are still waiting on those drains. They have been ordered, they have not been put in. New kennels have been put in. The kennels were purchased without any regards to how the animals would, with the well-being of the dogs. They allow for zero visibility. This leads to isolation and increase in fear and anxiety and frustration, which could be perceived as behavioral issues, which then deems them unadoptable, which then leads to euthanasia. In requesting the metal frames be modified to the height that we had asked them to be, and this is all in the industry for animals, Lisa Hill informed us that this, they could not do this because it would invalidate the warranty. The sad truth is that the metal within the doors does not come all the way down. At the bottom, it is nothing but two, maybe one-fourth plywood with, that are actually adhered by tape, which one of the doors have already been taken off by simply a bored dog, not an aggressive dog. It was taken off by a Great Dane that had nothing better to do because they sit in those kennels all day. There are no policies, procedures, and guidelines for the day-to-day operations of that facility. Mr. Largent consistently changes the interpretation to whatever best suits the needs for himself or public health at the time. Now, I'm going to tell you a couple little stories, and we have kept quiet, we don't go out on social media. Nothing gets resolved by being dramatic. An elderly lady came in with her cats to get a rabies shot. The cat scratched her. This is her own cat, it's a domesticated cat, two years old. Mr. Largent mandated that cat to quarantine in that facility for 10 days. After 10 days, the cat had to be transferred because there was no vet care, so it had to be transferred to an outside vet to get that rabies shot. The cat had set in its urine for so long that it had urine burns on it. The lady then was told, the elderly lady is then told, you will need to pay for the rabies shots and any other cost concerning the urine burns. I watched a family come in to reclaim an old dog. They were told the fee was $300, and don't get me wrong, I understand a cause for fees, and, but I was wondering why this. And, and just so you know, if you're, you're told if you don't reclaim your dog, they will either be adopted or euthanized, and a lot of older dogs are simply euthanized out there. The reason the reclaimed fee was so high is because this was the second impoundment of a dog. The other one had occurred 13 years ago when it was a pup. That's unfair. That's, that's ridiculous. There's supposed to be a three-year reset now, but of course, there's no policy on that, so we don't really know if that is true out there or not. You know, despite the repeated requests for policy and procedure that allows dogs to be walked, shall I continue or dance or?
One more minute.
So the dogs, despite repeated requests, there has no process or policy in place that allows the dogs to be walked prior to meeting with potential adopters. These animals are forced into a small viewing room, no windows, because God knows, safety's not an issue, surrounded by strangers without first being allowed the opportunity to relieve themselves. That's inhuman. They're now going to put it into place, but they're putting it into place because they're tired of hearing me gripe about it, not because they think it isn't the innately right thing to do for these animals. I could continue with countless stories, but I suspect that you have identified the pattern here. Despite countless meetings with Lisa Hill, Gail O'Neil, Bill Dart, and Greg Largent, the Saglin County Department of Public Health consistently demonstrates an unwillingness or an inability to enact and enforce policies that ensure humane care of the animals, reasonable policies for fees and animal reclaim, and support the staff, the safety of the staff, volunteers, and animals. I know you guys, the city requires two animal control officers to be on, I believe, at all times. Recently, something happened, and they can only be one, and instead of demonstrates an unwillingness or an inability to enact and enforce policies that ensure humane care of the animals, reasonable policies for fees and animal reclaim, and support the staff, uh, the safety of the staff, volunteers and animals. I know you guys, the city requires two animal control officers to be on, I believe, at all times. Recently, something happened and they could only be one. And instead of working that around so they can make sure there was two, it was just simply ignored and they left one animal control on uh, for the entire weekend, which is, which is dangerous. Um, Kennel Shaft repeatedly worked short. They've been asking for additional help for a long time. Brian McFadden stated that he sees this failure as a product of financial challenges. It is not. I would disagree and would point to a breakdown in the process, professionalism and the failure of the leadership at public health. The staff have, have been asked why. I always ask staff why they don't speak out. They said they have gone there many times and nothing ever changes. You know, nobody wants to lose their job or their insurance in this day and age. As public health has failed in management of animal control, I respectfully, respectfully, res, sorry, it's getting close to my bedtime, respectfully proposed transition of animal control, uh, uh, into the, um, sheriff's office. I mean, sheriff's office should know the importance of policies and procedures. We have a robust volunteer organization, robust. People would come out there and walk those dogs before they were put into rooms with adopters. We are willing to clean up after the animals to do everything we can. Um, Sangamon County Animal Control needs a new model. Shifting management and oversight to the sheriff's office would better serve our community needs as there is absolutely no community involvement or, or, or any programs, enhance the safety and well-being of the animals and ensure standard operating procedures. Thank you.
Just to be clear, you're with the Friends group?
I am. I'm just, I, yes, I am. There's, and there's just, there's many, many issues. The, the lack of professionalism out there is astounding as far as assessing animals. Yeah, it's just, that was, this is just the tip of the iceberg. If you guys want the, the bang for your buck for what you're paying for, you're not getting it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Angela Hayes? Okay. Uh, Amanda?
Amanda, four hundred South Greenwood Avenue. So I am also here to address the ordinance that's coming before you and the contract with the county. Um, I will mirror what Mary says and validate that. Um, I have seen it in person for three years now, over three years. Um, we have done everything within our power to ma- make and effect change, working with the county. Um, and nothing comes to fruition. So what we are asking is for you to use your position with the, with the ordinance, um, to help us affect some change, um, to build in some accountability, professionalism. There are a lot of changes that could be so easily made, um, that have not been made. Um, and it all stems back to lack of management, lack of professionalism. Um, this is not rocket science. People are doing this in, you know, central Illinois, doing it better. Um, they have all this word of the volunteers. There is a huge group of people within the community that care. Um, we love our community. We love the people in it and the animals in it. And we all, like, the animals deserve better ultimately. I would say placing it under, a different, like, under Jack Campbell, that might, uh, bring some positive change. Clearly, it's not happening, um, under public health. The other issue that I have too is like, I sit here and I I'm watching everybody else's presentations this evening. So we're all looking at data, right? We're using data to make informed decisions. This does not happen in that department. So also as a taxpayer, I am not comfortable knowing that they are spending these amounts of money without looking into it, spending it wisely. There is an immense amount, amount of waste going on. Um, their finances are not transparent. They structure the, the fees to, uh, effectively, uh, make the animals bear it on their backs. So that's what's happening. So where is the rest of the money going? It's not being put to use in our community effectively, in my opinion. So like I said, some small changes, um, an effort to work together with your assets. Um, our volunteer group, I will say, is not treated as an asset. Where, it should be. You know, we are taxpaying members of this community. We care. We are there. We are working. I'm here after working, you know, eight and a half hours at my day job, but I'm sitting here because I, I care, you know? And this is COVID times too. There are all these people in the audience that care. Um, we're just asking for a little help to get, to make a change, you know, some accountability. That's the basics that I have to present. There are many other stories like Mary shared too, um, that we can attest to also. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you much. Appreciate it. That's all that we had sign up to speak.
I'd like to speak.
Your name?
I'm Shelley Clarkson. Um, I said I wasn't going to and I changed my mind. Uh, I'm going to say that everything they said is true. But as I'm standing here and listening to, you know, hours and hours and droning, we're all bored, we're tired. We need help. Help us. Please, help us. Nobody's listening. We're all saying this every time we come up here and nobody's listening. It's, you know, nice, but nobody's helping us. We are doing the work. We are the volunteers. We care. We are, she's not spending just, you know, three hours after work. She'll be twenty-four seven. We're all twenty-four seven. We are working. And nobody's listening to us. And the picture is, these animals are suffering. If you saw it, if you were there and saw it, you could not go to sleep. Help us. I am begging you. Pay attention this time. Help us get some management. Help us have a say. We need a seat at the table. We are the ones knowing what's going on. The people that work there are getting a paycheck. Some of them are great. Some of them are there for a paycheck. We're there because we're trying to keep these animals alive. It helps our city. It helps our community. We don't want them on the streets and we don't want any health issues. So, wake up and help us, please. Thank you.
Like I said, I think we are listening. That's why we've held this contract up so long.
Yes.
My, my question is, did you submit to your request to, I guess, anybody in the city so they can take those requests into consideration when they're doing the contract? I think you had a list of requi- requests that you brought up, asking for like, you know, the cages or whatever, the doors and stuff. Did you submit those?
Jane McBride has worked very closely with the county. Um, and.
Do you have it? You can give it to someone at the city so we can further listen. Appreciate it. Ralph, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. One of the reasons why I have held off on this is that the city has requested some additional training, I think. And I can't remember everything in the contract that we've requested. And, uh, we wanna give, you know, I know the county has someone that's been out, uh, with the illness, uh, that, that needs to review it and get back to, to the mayor's office. But, um, so, so that is, that's why I've continued to hold off. Um, you know, the fact of the matter is, what other choices do we have? We will have no animal control, zero, if we don't have the county. Look, I don't, I'm not saying that they provide the greatest service, but they're the only service right now. You know, I, I, I love animals too, but, and I, I served on the animal control, on the Citizens Advisory Board for Animal Control, uh, way, 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 way back. And I, I, I will tell you that we, we're kinda, we're kinda stuck here. They've already done the job of animal control for the city since March first. And, you know, I, I've said, I'm willing to go out for an RFP. You wrote an email saying that, that I was just making fun of you guys. That's not what I was doing. If we can find a better solution, I'm ready for it. I, I, you know, a lot of your concerns, I would, I mean, quite honestly, they need to go to the county board. And go before the county board. I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, but the reason why we've held this and I've continued to hold this is, I wanna make sure we get the, the opportunity to negotiate as good a contract as we have, even though it's six months into the contract. And that's a concern I have. So that's the reason why we're holding it. That's the reason why I'm, I mean, we could have brought it up and voted on it and done whatever, but if we don't, if, if, if this doesn't pass, when we do bring it up, we need to know what our options are because the county could say, okay, then we won't be your animal control. And in mid, you know, wh- where, where do we go from there? Because we don't have a lot of options.
Can I, can I address that? We do appreciate everything the city has done. You have held it up. And Ralph, I, I, I understand. I do believe you're very sincere in your concern about animals and uh, this contract. Um, part of the problem, as in my email, uh, that I sent, um, is, 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 is unfortunately the nature of this contract. Um, it was sold, undersold as a single, as a sole provider twenty years ago, and we're, we're stuck with that situation right now. Um, I think the fact that you have not paid, um, has provided you with some leverage. Um, as I think you hear today, um, we, we have a little problem to get the county's attention, serious attention on things. And I think what you've, you've done here, you have gotten the county's attention, which we appreciate. The contract that's before the county right now is very reasonable. The counterproposal to the county, um, is very reasonable. And yet we're still haven't gotten a response on that, from my understanding. Uh, we've made a number of responses. My, my proposal to move this over to the sheriff's department is also very reasonable because it's, it's at least something they can do and it's not really gonna cost them anymore. You know, they probably don't agree with me on that, but whatever. It's another option, another option, uh, to try to get some different service, different management in place. So those are, those are things we can do. The other thing, I think Alderman McMinimum has got to suggest as well that we go into a feasibility study. My problem with the RFP is I don't think we've got anybody ready to jump on that. I just don't think the privates, the nonprofits are ready to go. So I don't wanna get down that road thinking that that's an immediate solution. I think what you're doing, you, we've gotta hold their feet to the fire. What they, they do understand is when they don't get paid. They understand that. And the leverage that that has been providing has been very significant. We're much further along than we have been years past. We, we haven't kicked up a fuss like this for a number of years. So I just think, I really appreciate everything that's done. I would like the county to respond to the city. That's only something that would, is, is reasonable. You haven't asked for anything that's unreasonable. You've highlighted the things that need to be done. And we need to get that answer. We need to get the transparency and the like. I wanted the Friends people here because all you've heard from us is me. Perhaps you can understand why you're just hearing from me. It's difficult for them to come forward. But I wanted you to hear that this is where this information is coming, plus my own personal experiences of having to deal with it. When I have to go in there and explain the law to them and, and go back and forth, I've got another one I gotta deal with right now with the liens and, and the investigations involved with our critical care problem. That's me having to go back in there to deal with that rather than them. They should know how to do this in a manner that's gonna protect the animals, the owners, the residents of the city. But we're back. We are waiting for Mr. Benoit to come out of a, a health situation. I believe that's what we're waiting for. With Joel, uh, coming out of, uh, Joel Benoit, with the state's attorney is the one we're waiting for. But I hope that's all we're waiting for. I hope we're not being stolen bald. So we do greatly appreciate it. I really appreciate you taking the time to listen tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Uh, I think that's it. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Third adjourned.